I cancel, we're just at 6:03, so if we still have quorum clerk, I'm going to call the public hearing to order.
Yes, Mayor Stewart, I'm sorry. Yes, everything is ready to go.
Great, thanks. So I'm going to call this public hearing of Tuesday, July 28, 2020 to order. Counsel, for purposes of confirming we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. This meeting is being convened by electronic means authorized under the order M192 from the Minister of Public Safety. If my connection is lost during any portion of this meeting, we'll recess until the meeting is restored. The connection is restored and that's same for you, counsel, as you need to be listening to all the information that's presented. We, if you get disconnected, the contact information is being circulated to you. Please make sure your, your video is on throughout the meeting, and if you have to leave the meeting, please let the clerk know, just so we can maintain quorum in this quasi judicial process. We're going to be proceeding with audio only, as some councillors are participating via phone. And lastly, we have speakers who will be providing comments to council by phone, so moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when their turn comes up. Of course, want to acknowledge that we, that we are on traditional unceded territories of Musquegon, Squamish and Slaveltus, and thank them for having care for this land and, and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. Counsel, I hear some typing in the background, if perhaps you could just make sure you mute. I really want to thank staff for all their work they do always for the city, but especially for the hard work of the clerks, bringing these public hearings to council this month. It really has been an immense task, and I do think they've gone very, very smoothly. So, so thank you very much to clerks and the planning staff, and to, of course, the City Manager's Office for making that happen. So clerks, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart and the Chair, Councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova. Councillor De Genova. Councillor Fry.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly.
Present.
And Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
Meeting has quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. Just some announcements before we begin. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations. And again, I'll steer speakers and council questions off to the issue at hand and try to stay away from policy debate or other larger matters. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at VanCityClerk for updates and the progress of the meeting, so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments and agenda items can be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Speakers, the presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight 20 second delay, and so to navigate through your slides, please say next and I'll help along there just to make sure things go smoothly. Finally, if council does not conclude from hearing all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene the meeting tomorrow evening, which is Wednesday, July 29 at 6:00 PM by electronic means. Just a reminder that this is a quasi judicial body this evening. We're constituted in this public hearing, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, which is for safe debate until after the close of the speakers list. After hearing from speakers, council may approve in principle the application, refuse the application, or defer the application for further consideration. So we're going to move to our first item, which is a text amendment on 475 Alexander Street, Japanese Hall. If the clerk could read out the application summary of correspondence, please.
This is an application by Formworks Architecture Incorporated to amend CD1337, Comprehensive Development District for the Japanese Hall at 475 Alexander Street, to increase the permitted floor space ratio from 2.17 to 2.21 to allow for a mezzanine for programming and storage space. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. One piece of correspondence addressing other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 4:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. Counsel, we do have speakers registered for this item, so we'll, we will be hearing from staff.
Oh my gosh, this is a nightmare, I can't get through.
We do have some chatter, perhaps that's from the moderator or clerks, maybe from somebody that has unmuted. But we have Austin Norrie, the rezoning planner, who is going to make a presentation for us. I think 10 slides on this item. However, first I want to remind people that want to speak to this item to call toll-free 1-855-353-9183, followed by participant code 62088 hashtag. They get on the list before the close of the speakers list. Again, that is toll-free 1-855-353-9183, followed by participant code 62088 hashtag to get on the speakers list. That's the same number for all items this evening. And that number, those numbers are available on the live stream feed or also on Twitter. So we have Austin Norrie from the rezoning centre to speak to the application.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. Can you hear me and see the presentation?
I can see it and I can hear you. Thanks very much, please go ahead.
Great. 475 Alexander Street, known as the Vancouver Japanese Language School and Japanese Hall, is located in the downtown east side in the historic Powell Street area, which is the historic neighbourhood of the Japanese Canadian community of Vancouver. Situated at the corner of Jackson and Alexander Street, the Japanese Hall lies on an existing CD1 and contains two buildings owned and operated by a Japanese Canadian nonprofit society. One of the buildings is the, is the 1928 Japanese Hall and is classified as a Class B Heritage Building. It was constructed in 1928. The other building is the 2000 Japanese Hall, which was built in the year 2000 and within it contains a double-height atrium space. The proposed amendments to this CD1 do not alter the 1928 Japanese Hall Heritage Building and changes to the form of development only pertain to the interior of the atrium space of the 2000 Japanese Hall. Notably, this site is an important gathering space for the Japanese Canadian community and provides affordable cultural services and amenities, including Japanese language classes, childcare services and calligraphy lessons. This proposal is to renovate the programming space within a nonprofit centre by increasing the floor area by approximately 720 square feet. The increased floor area would allow for the construction of a mezzanine for programming space, as well as would allow for storage space within the mezzanine. On the exterior of the mezzanine will be an interactive screen, which will be used to project historical and cultural information, creating an interactive and educational experience for visitors. The interactive screen will also be used for various events, activities and celebrations held in the building's atrium. Of importance is the rich cultural history of this location to Japanese Canadians. The Japanese Language School was founded in 1906 and the Japanese Hall was first built in 1928. It was in 1942 during World War II that Japanese Canadians were interned by the Canadian government and their, and their properties such as the 1928 Japanese Hall were expropriated. The 1928 Japanese Hall was one of the only buildings or properties returned to the Japanese Canadian community, and in 1953, the school was able to be restored and reopened. It was in the year 2000 that the Japanese Language School was greatly expanded upon, and last year, the federal government designated the 1928 building a national historic site, further emphasizing the cultural significance of the location. This application is supported by the city's Cultural Infrastructure Plan, a component of the city's Cultural Shift Plan, as it promotes the expansion of affordable cultural space to meet its 10-year target of creating 800 square feet of new cultural space. It recognizes cultural redress where communities have suffered from discrimination and supports new opportunities and actions for preserving tangible and intangible cultural heritage. In alignment is the Downtown East Side Plan, which supports cultural programming revitalization and the celebration of Japanese Canadian heritage within the downtown east side. As the city initiated text amendment, the city has tools to ensure that the expansion or creation of nonprofit space is nominal for a nonprofit operator. And, and as such, the renovation of a community-serving space is seen as a public benefit and with council's approval, would be excused from providing a community amenity contribution. In addition, the nonprofit will have a nominal DCL rate of $20 in total. To conclude, city staff recommends support of this application as it allows for the expansion of community-serving space, as well as alliance with city adopted policy. City staff, the architecture team and representatives from the nonprofit are available to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. And let's see. The city is the applicant for this council, but the nonprofit property owner has a presentation. So perhaps we could see that as well?
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Darius Mays. I'm the Executive Director of the Vancouver Japanese Language School, Japanese Hall. It's our great pleasure to be able to share some additional information about this project, which was just spoken to. This is a project that's been many years in development and planning and led by community volunteers like Laura Saimoto. I'd like to turn the presentation over to her to speak a little bit about the vision of the project and how this is going to support our community.
Great, thanks very much.
Great, thank you. Hello, Mayor and council, it's nice to see you again from last year I spoke at City Council. Could we start the presentation?
It is up and going, so please go ahead and just say next when you want the slide to move.
Okay, great. So, well, welcome everyone, and we're just very ecstatic to, you know, announce that we have been designated a national historic site in addition to our municipal as well as provincial designation. So we have all three levels of heritage designation. So this text amendment that you see here is part of the last phase of our Heritage Daycare Renovation Project, where we renovated our 1928 Heritage Building and launched Children's World Childcare Centre. So it's been a while. We opened the childcare centre in 2012, and it's taken us a few years to get to the planning stages of our interpretive centre renovation, which is focusing on the heritage phase of the, of the project. So it's basically telling the story of Japanese Canadian history through the story of our organisation. I can't really see the slides, but I hope you're seeing them.
Yes, we are, yep.
Next slide. So I, are we on slide two?
It says Heritage Renovation Daycare Project at the top.
Okay, so next slide, please.
Our second century stability path.
Okay, great. So this, this, basically this project is like the last phase of our, you know, Heritage Daycare renovation, but it's our second century sustainability project. And, you know, it's one of the only properties returned to any Japanese Canadians after the dispossession. You know, this is an extremely important part of telling the story of our community and of the Powell Street area. And so, next slide, please. I just wanted to remind everyone about what the pre-war Powell Street area looked like. So it's, you should be seeing a photo of our 1928 building, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So next slide, please. So here you can see, I'd just like to point out the, the super vibrancy of the Powell Street district before the war. And there were 8,000 Japanese Canadians living in the area and along a three-block radius along Powell Street, there were over 400 businesses. Next slide, please. And you can see how the community was, started to integrate with the Canadian community and, you know, had parades along Powell Street for Dominion Day. And when World War II broke out, there were over 1,000 second language students at the school. So, and I just wanted to mention, you know, like the Japanese Canadian community here was, was very, very, it was such a lively market village. And, you know, the 19, our architect for the Japanese Hall was Sharp and Thompson, and they were also the architects for UBC Point Grey Campus, as well as Bard Street Bridge. Next slide, please. So we should be going to the project impact, is that the slide you're seeing?
Just looking here, we are looking at Powell Street 1930s.
Okay, so next slide.
The win-win.
Okay, great. So what is the win-win for this project? I just wanted to, because it, I mean, the text amendment is a part of the much larger project, so that's what we're just going to show you. Could you go to the next slide? And really, it's taken, you know, over close to 80 years now for us to really own our own history so that we're able to share it. So this project is really about creating the feeling of home again in this, in this, in this area. It's also has very practical considerations as our ancestors, we've learned from our ancestors, we have to look forward and we have to be pragmatic about our sustainability. So we're including in this project capital repairs, a facelift, and also upping our programming so that we have education programming for Japanese Canadian history. And really, we've modeled our programming, these kind of programming on the Tenement Museum in New York City. So we go to the next slide? So we just wanted to show you different measures that we're taking within the renovation itself. So you should be seeing here the mezzanine in the hall, which the text amendment is for. So that's additional storage space. We're creating all the spaces in the building to make it more flexible use so that it also brings in more revenue and also we can generate more flexible programming. Can we go to the next slide?
It says Interactive Learning Spaces and then Flex Learning and Working Community Space.
Right, so this slide is about, we've also designed our, we're transforming our library into a community archive, as well as a learning commons, and also having the space to be our, our office space to be flex space for co-work space for other community organizations. Next slide, please. And I, I can't remember which slide it was, but let's see here. Yeah, so the purpose of, you know, my father always used to say, if you don't have a building, like a space, you really can't do anything. So this, you know, as Vancouver's new national historic site, we are doing this project as a tribute to honour our past, all of our ancestors who contributed to, well, one, being able to survive 114 years through the internment and dispossession, as well as being sustainable as a community organization through all these years, all the volunteer students and community members, and at the same time, to launch ourselves into the second century. And our, and we really believe that, you know, as what happened to Japanese Canadians during the war is all of our history. So and we believe the lessons that can be learned from our history are lessons that we can all learn today. So in order to do this, we feel that as a strong leader in the neighbourhood, we can become an anchor to tell the story of all Japanese Canadians who are displaced from this neighbourhood. And I'd really like to thank the City of Vancouver all these years for supporting us through all of our projects, through the tough times, as well as the exciting times which are coming up. To really make, we really believe that downtown east side is such a beautiful and heartfelt community, and we believe heritage activation can be a tool to reactivate, reactivate the community and really showcase the beauty of our city and also reclaiming our history. So that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I, I will say that your passion shines through here. I will also say, the format of this meeting is that councillors really won't be able to discuss how they feel about the project until we've heard from the remainder of staffs, sorry, the staff questions and from the rest of the public. So however, I have a feeling there will be a number of comments coming during the debate section of this, of this session that should, you know, indicate how council feels about this project. But for now, we're, we're in a neutral stage of the process where we're just hearing from the public. So I'm going to turn to that part now, but thank you very much for your, for your presentation. So, let's see. So right now, staff, council, sorry, I've been, I've been told that neither of the speakers that were registered to speak have, we've reminded them, but they haven't made themselves available this evening. So, but now you have question, you have chance to ask questions to council, to staff or the applicants. And I have a list here, and let's remind your staff, this, sorry, council, I'll convey already, that this isn't the time for debate or decision. It's just time for asking kind of technical questions about this side of things. So thanks, Councillor Dominado, up to five minutes, and this is staff or to the nonprofit operator.
Pardon, pardon the interruption, Mayor Stewart. You are going to, questions to staff first, is that correct, and then look at speakers?
Yes, well, the questions to staff or the, or the nonprofit operator, then move to speakers.
Okay, sorry, sorry for the interruption.
No, I, perhaps it's unclear there, that's fine. And just a reminder, if you do want to speak to this, the number is 1-833-353-8610, participant code 62088 hashtag. And that number is on the live stream and on Twitter. So Councillor Dominado, whenever you're ready, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff for the presentation. I'm just, I'm going to direct my question to Laura and Darius. And Darius, welcome to your role and your new role. And Laura, thank you for the presentation, we've talked many times. I'm, I'm, I appreciate the heartfelt and the real passion in your voice, and I know this is really important to the community. I'm curious if you could maybe expand or give us some insight as to how we as councillor city can support you in sort of furthering so that heritage activation and revitalization. Obviously, this, this amendment is one piece, as you noted, but I'd love to hear more about how we might support you. I think you're on mute.
Okay, am I, can you hear me now? Okay, so there are several ways, and I think one is to be very vocal about, you know, the history of the neighbourhood, that the downtown east side was originally historic Powell Street, and that there is a correlation historically with the situation in the downtown east side now. So being very open about that to educate Vancouverites. The second, of course, is very practical. We ask for support from the city in terms of funding. And also, the third is really, we've been working, the community has been working with the planners on validating and acknowledging cultural heritage. Because of the dispossession of all the properties owned by Japanese Canadians, and we're the only one in the neighbourhood which is remaining from pre-war, we ask that there be physical remembrance of the district of our history and along Powell Street, so within the neighbourhood. And that takes a commitment on the part of the city, as well as, as the community, to work together and to partner to make this happen. But it can happen if we do it together. So we ask for collaboration and partnership to make this happen. Because it, it can only happen if we all work together on it.
Thank, thank you for that. Counsel, I'll just remind you, I know this is a very emotional topic, as it should be, but we are here today to focus on the, just the, the narrow text amendment. So if I could just get you to kind of confine your questions to that, that would be great. Thanks very much, Councillor Kirby Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I'll keep my question focused on narrowly, on policy. And it's just that clarification for staff is that we're considering a relatively simple CD1 text amendment here. And I asked the question because it was referenced in the presentation to the Making Space for Arts and Culture as a supporting policy. So just to clarify that that's sort of contextual, that the, the, I guess the parameters of the decision tonight here are specifically around amending the CD1, is that right?
Yes, you are correct, councillor.
Okay, and so it's just sort of contextual, the reference to the Making Space for Arts and Culture.
I see.
Okay, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We don't have any other councillors on the list, so now I'm going to move to hear from the public. Again, we don't, we, we had two registered speakers, so we did send them reminders, but they haven't, so far, materialized tonight. But if other people would like to participate, the number is 1- But if other people would like to participate, the number is 1-833-353-8610, participant code 62088 to get on the list. And I'm going to check with the clerks now, is there anybody on the line or in the council chambers, clerks?
Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk. There is no one waiting in the council chambers, and I would have to refer to the tell us moderator to know if there is anyone on the line.
Great, if you could do that, that'd be great.
Yep, sorry, this is the tell us moderator. If anyone would like to join and queue up to make a statement on this topic, you can press star one on your keypad, and if you change your mind, it's star two. And let me see, there isn't anyone that has joined as of now.
Okay, what I'm going to do is now call the second time. If there's any other person who would like to speak to this, this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, participant code 62088 hashtag to get on the list, and just ask the moderator, has anybody else or maybe call again to your list?
No one has joined yet, again, it's star one on your keypad if you want to queue up.
Okay, thank you, and I'm going to call, well, call for a third time, councillor, and we'll take a five-minute recess. So if there's any other speakers who wish to speak to councillor, please call 1-833-353-8610 62088 hashtag, and that information is on the, on your screen, on the live stream, as well as on Twitter. So clerks, I'm going to take, and councillor, I'm going to take a five-minute recess just to give people a chance to call in if they'd like to speak to this item. So it's 6:31 now, let's come back at 6:36, and perhaps you can stretch your legs while you're, while we're waiting. Okay, thanks, we'll see you at 6:36. Clerks, anybody in the council chamber to speak to this item?
Mayor, this is the clerk, and there is no one in the council chamber.
Great, thanks so much. I'll go to the tell us moderator. Anybody on the line to speak to this item?
Yep, let me have a look. Nobody has joined to make a statement.
Great, thanks so much. So councillor, we're going to close the speakers' list now, and seeing there are no public comments or a few public comments received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I will close receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments. The applicant is the city, but would the city or the nonprofit operator care to make any closing comments?
City staff have no closing comments.
Can I ask if...
We know, we just, we'd just really like to ride the momentum of this project and get it done so that we can lead the neighborhood in heritage activation. So we'd really like to work with the city and with the community to get this done. So that's all we have, and we're very grateful to everybody, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If councillor has any questions, please put yourself on the list. I don't see anybody on the list, so I'm going to ask for someone to move the recommendation.
So moved.
Councillor Boyle.
Second link, councillor Weeb.
Second link, councillor Weeb. Okay, thank you so much. So now we're in the debate decision. I hear councillor Swanson on the list, please go ahead up to five minutes, councillor Swanson.
Yeah, I just want to thank the folks from the Japanese Hall bringing this forward, for being such an amazing community member in the downtown east side, for always expressing solidarity with the low-income residents of the neighborhood, calling on your own experience of being displaced to try and ensure that no one else is displaced. I've been in the building many times, that's where we had the Poverty Olympics, and you were great hosts, and so of course, I'm going to, I'm sure we'll all vote for this, and I can't wait to see how it looks when it's done.
Thank you, councillor Swanson. I don't see anybody else on the list, so I'm going to call for a vote on this item. Clerks, if you could load that up, the vote is underway now. Looking for councillor Bly, councillor Dominado, councillor Dejanova. Clerks, do we have councillor Bly? I'm just making sure that if they're absent or on leave of absence... I see councillor Bly on the, on the screen is logged in. Councillor Bly, are you there? Councillor, we're just going to have to pause, because if there's a technical problem, that's the rule, so I'm just going to pause and just check with the clerks if they can contact councillor Bly, I'll be right back to you. Councillor Bly, I see some noise coming from your background there, are you able Still checking councillor, just if we can reach councillor Bly, just so she can cast her vote, we'll be right back to you.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm having some tech issues, so I've been in and out of WebEx here.
Okay, can we, would you like a vote assist on this?
I'm going to abstain from this vote because I had to be on tech support for the first part of this presentation.
Okay.
So I don't feel I've been able to be fully present for the duration of the proceeding.
Okay, uh, did you notify, so how the process works here is that...
I notified the clerk, and I got a call from IT, but I had to restart my computer in order to do it.
And were there segments that you missed of the...
Like the 15 minutes.
Okay, I think it's possible for the clerk to provide a summary for you, but I'm going to check back.
Okay.
Because we just want to make sure, you know, really, regularly, if anybody loses connection, we're supposed to pause, and so I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't know that, but I'll check with the clerk and just get right back to you if we can provide you a summary of what you missed, and then that would enable you to decide on the voting. I'll be right back to you, councillor Bly, one second, please. Councillor Bly, could I just chat with you on the WebEx for a sec?
Yes. Do what I missed, staff sent that along, and I'm happy to vote and appreciate the time of councillor and the applicant to do so.
Great, thanks so much, and just waiting for your vote on screen, and then we're ready to go.
Okay.
Great, thanks, councillor. So that is unanimous in favor, and if clerks could put the vote on the screen, that would be great, and just want to say thanks so much to councillor, and to the staff, and to the heritage hall operators, that's great, thanks very much, and we're moving on to the next item now, although I know we'd all like to celebrate a little more. We do, we'll move on to the next item. Thanks very much. That is the CD1 rezoning of 6031 Dunbar Street, and, and if anybody wants to speak to this item, 1-833-353-8610, participant code 62088 hashtag, and I'll get the clerk to read the application and summary, of course.
This is an application by Diamond Group Architecture Incorporated to rezone 6031 Dunbar Street from RS5 One Family Dwelling District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of two residential buildings at two and a half and three stories comprising nine secure market rentals, a maximum height of 11.5 meters, and a floor space ratio of 1.1 are proposed. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Three pieces of correspondence in support of the application, 28 pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application, one piece of correspondence addressing other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 4:00 PM today.
Thanks so much for that, and we do have speakers at this council, so we'll move ahead with the, with the presentation. We have James Bolt from the Rezoning Centre here, who will walk us through approximately 21 slides, and then move on to the applicant. So staff, if you want to go ahead?
This is James Bolt, can everybody hear me?
We can, thanks very much, and we don't see your slides on the screen yet, so maybe we'll just wait until they're up. Here they come now. I'm just looking at the public screen, they are up and ready to go, so whenever you're ready.
All right, good evening, Mayor and councillor, my name is James Bolt, Rezoning Centre in the Housing Priorities Division of the Rezoning Centre. The purpose of this report is to assess an application for a nine-unit secured residential rental building at 6031 Dunbar Street under the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy, commonly known as the AHC policy. The site is currently zoned RS5 and is located in the Dunbar neighborhood near Southwest Marine Drive. The surrounding zoning is primarily RS5 and RS6, which allows low-density housing, including laneway housing, in some cases, infill development. The site is a couple blocks from the local shopping area zone C2, as noted here in the slide, and the Dunbar bus loop. Within a 15-minute walk of the site are several parks, schools, and a daycare shown on this map. The current site is 66 feet wide by 130 feet deep, which offers sufficient room to develop the site with a townhouse project. Surrounding properties are developed... are developed with single-family housing on similar-sized lots. The AHC policy first approved in 2012 was aimed at exploring the delivery of a variety of housing projects which provided alternatives to market-strata ownership, as well as increasing the supply of rental housing. Originally, there was a 20-project cap, but this was removed in 2018. The program ended in June of 2019. However, applications which had been received prior to the deadline are allowed to continue to be processed under the AHC policy. The rezoning application for 6031 Dunbar Street was submitted before the deadline and therefore is permitted to proceed. The AHC policy allows for development in low-density areas such as those zoned RS, subject to a number of provisions, as shown here. The application for 6031 Dunbar Street is for two, a two-and-a-half-plus basement and a three-story secured residential rental townhouse of buildings, which is allowable under policy for this location. The project proposes nine secured rental residential dwelling units, all of them which have two or more bedrooms, in a townhouse form, meaning that all the units have their own individual entrances accessing the exterior. The height and density proposed are commensurate with typical townhouse developments of this scale. Four off-street parking spaces are proposed, which meets the requirements of the parking bylaws, subject to certain provisions. As well noted here, this project is estimated to take approximately 30 construction jobs as part of the recovery initiatives of Restart Smart Vancouver. The front building is two-and-a-half stories high with a basement level with six stacked units in total. The rear building is three stories with no basement and contains three side-by-side units, as well as parking, the parking for the site off the lane. Tree retention has been maximized where possible. The shaded circles in this diagram show the proposed retained trees, and the unshaded circles show the trees to be removed. In review of the application, it was determined that saving one of the trees at the lane, shown here as tree number 16, the Douglas fir, is likely viable, and conditions around this are included in the report. The design of the building references the RS5 guidelines. The roof spring points are low to reduce the impact of massing, and in order to give the buildings a smaller vernacular appearance. Softer materials are used, consistent with materials common in single-family neighbourhoods. The condition of the lane with respect to the viability of the project is one issue noted by surrounding residents. The lane is a full standard six meters or 20 feet wide, however, has seen some encroachments from landscaping and vegetation over the years. Engineering staff has advised the lane is fully open and can accommodate standard vehicular traffic and service vehicles, and that encroachments can be removed if problematic. A comparison of the project with the RS5 zoning is provided in appendix X of the report, sorry, appendix F of the report, but this diagram shows the approximate relationship of the proposal with envelopes of where new development could be constructed under the current RS5 zoning. As shown by the circle between the buildings, there is a commensurate trade-off of open space between the buildings regarding the proposal and what could be built under the RS5 zoning, which in turn allows a commensurate level of light access across the middle of the adjoining lot to the north. This slide shows the average rents on the west side for different unit types. Currently, there is insufficient rental data for four-bedroom units, but the rents would be commensurate with typical rate increases per unit size. The average rents serving a household are based on 30% of gross income. On the far right, I've shown some income data, noting that this data also includes Southlands under the census category. About one-fifth of the households are renters. If one looked at the average income, a couple could manage to rent up to a two-bedroom or purchase a one-bedroom unit. As noted in the report, renting presents a more viable option than ownership for many households. A single-person household would find it challenging to rent or own in this neighbourhood. However, the AHC policy was not intended to provide affordability for all residents. The goal was to increase the supply of rental housing and other housing types to help ease Vancouver's low vacancy rate of under 1%, and overtime helped flatten costs. Given the size of the project, the open houses were well-attended, and over 150 residents and households responded. Approximately 33 individuals and households provided responses, which are discussed in detail in the report. Overall, staff concluded that the project has done a good job in fitting a townhouse form into the neighbourhood and responds appropriately to its context in a manner anticipated by the AHC policy. In conclusion, the project at 6031 Dunbar Street will provide nine much-needed rental units on the west side, which will contribute towards the goals of the Vancouver Housing Strategy. Although this is the smallest project received under the AHC policy, it provides 100% family units, including two four-bedroom units, which is a rare offering. The project is appropriate in urban design response to the site and its context, and along with the conditions of the appendices of report, it is consistent with the intent of the Affordable Housing Choices policy. Staff support the project and recommend council approve the recommendations of this report. Now, I will add, we, you will have before you a yellow memo, which requires your action and your approval in conjunction with the recommendations in the summary and recommendations for this item. This changes with respect to the engineering conditions in appendix B. The conditions in this report were incomplete, which was staff's error. In fact, it was my error. I apologize for this error. The revised conditions in the yellow memo, however, are complete and formatted correctly. The yellow memo contains additional service agreement conditions, which are consistent with routine engineering requirements. The applicant advises that the developer has no concerns about the changes. It is recommended that council move a motion to approve the memo in conjunction with the other recommendations in the summary and recommendations. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your presentation, and I'll ask if the applicant is here, and whether you'd like to say anything about this application.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Craig Murch, our applicant. We're very comfortable with James' summary of the proposal.
You're fading in and out a little bit.
We're very comfortable with James' summary of the proposal, and we don't have
Okay, thanks very much. Now we have questions to staff or the applicant, and if councillors have questions, if they could put themselves on the list. Councillor Dominado, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff for the presentation. A couple of questions. First one to staff, this came in under the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy. My understanding is that policy is now expired, so presumably this came in when the policy was still active. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. It expired in June of 2019, but any applications received prior to that are allowed to be, continue to be processed under that policy.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that. I have a question for the applicant in terms of, in terms of open houses and engagement with the neighbours and residents. Was there any feedback that you received as applicant, the applicant and modifications made to the design, the massing, the build? If there were, if you would be able to articulate those for council?
Thank you, thank you councillor. Yeah, we attended two separate open houses. I noticed that with a lot of the neighbours. We looked at a variety of different revisions, mostly to do with the massing of the building, but I would have to report at the end of the day that those, the massing, in our opinion, is, I think James mentions in his report, it's because of the nature of the sloped roofs and the fact that a lot of the occupancy on the top floors of both buildings is undersloped. We just didn't feel that we could reduce the massing much more than, I think, at the end, after having spoken to some members of the public, we may have dropped the massing by a foot or so before we made our final rezoning application, but there weren't, I have to admit, dramatic changes to the design as a result of that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And just so you're aware, you are a bit distant, at least for me. I don't know about others who are listening, but I'm finding, was finding it a little hard to hear you. But I did capture that, so I appreciate that. I'll leave it there for now. I see other councillors on the queue. Thank you.
Thanks to the applicant. You may be on hands-free, and that might be the difficulty, just guessing. On the councillor's ones, and up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you. I've got a couple of questions for the applicant. What do you expect the rents will be?
The applicant there? Might be on mute.
Hi, hi there. I'm just, I'm muted. The developer hasn't made a final decision at the moment about the rents, but the numbers that we've got so far are two-bedroom, just around 3,000, three-bedroom, just around 38,000.
Okay, that's good. I appreciate that. Then the second question is, what would it take to get you to make one or two of those units affordable to people that have the average renter income, which I think the report said was 59,000 in that neighbourhood? Would that be possible?
Well, that's a question that we haven't addressed directly with the client, so it's difficult for me to speak on every half to directly to that question, but it's certainly something we could bring up with the client.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Kirby Young?
Okay, I'm just taking myself off. Thanks. My questions around any changes made in response to public feedback were asked. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Council, and that's it for questions to staff and the applicant. We're going to go to the speakers list, and I have two confirmed speakers. We have Linda Lim is the first speaker. We have Ms. Lim on the, oh, in person. Clerks?
Yes, this is the clerk here. The speaker is just coming forward towards the chamber. I shall let you know when ready.
Great.
Hi, everyone. I just like to express my concern about this only nine units. Then all the expenses would be higher, but this is for affordable housing purpose. So the expense more high than the rent, they must charge high, right? So I'm thinking about, because my house is on Olympic, and millennials, they apply a project for us, African, but it was rejected by City Hall. I don't know why. Because we have a four-house altogether, that's 3A61, no, yeah, 3A61, 44th, and my number is Olympic, 5737, and my backyard and also Wallace, that four corners. We are able to build like at least 100 plus between that kind of units. Then the units, the more, then expenses will be less for the rental, and also bring better profit for the city. So I'm thinking, I think, I don't, I do support my, 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 my project.
Can I ask you?
But I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't support this 60, yeah, 6031 Dunbar, because that's too small. If it's such a small one, then everyone that residential also apply for this project, like nine units, or five units, or 10 units, then Vancouver City will look like what? That's what I concern too.
Okay, thank you very much. So for the 6031 Dunbar, you're saying you're opposed to this application?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Thank you very much.
Because my English is just like this, I hope you guys all understand what I try to express.
Your English is fine. I completely understood. We do have questions from councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Kirby Young, please go ahead.
Hello. Hi, I have just one question to help, to clarify. I just wanna understand, are you saying that you prefer single-family homes, or you prefer larger projects? I just want to be clear.
Sorry, I couldn't hear it because my hearing has some problems. Can you speak a little bit louder?
Yeah, I'll sit, yeah, no problem. How's that? Can you hear me now?
Hmm, yeah, I hope so, yeah.
Okay. So I just want to clarify, are you saying that you prefer single-family homes, or you prefer larger projects with more units?
Am I prefer a family home, or?
Yes.
Or single home?
Single-family home, like is already in the neighbourhood, or projects with more units, more density? What is your preference?
Well, my, what I try to express is, for, I, I, 100%, I support this affordable housing, and I don't mind to have some project, like some, at least four units, put it together, then have a more, multiple family can stay there and bring down all the city costs, every cost, because now only one single family and one house. The property tax is so high, and everything, you see, now in Vancouver, it's so hard to live. To living in Vancouver is very, very expensive now. So that's why.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I understand. And can I ask one other quick question? So you are a nearby resident?
Yeah, I'm resident, I'm resident, 5737 Olympic Street.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for speaking to council.
Thank you.
Thank you. So may I go now?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you. That's all the questions today. Thank you so much for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next round of speaker is Larry Benj, who I believe is in person as well. Clerks?
Yes, Mayor Stewart. We're just going to wipe down the podium, and Mr. Benj will be in shortly.
Great, thanks very much.
Mayor Stewart, the speaker is ready.
Great, thanks very much, Mr Benj. Please go ahead, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay.
My name is Larry Benj, I'm here as a private citizen, commenting on this project. I'm listed as the other in, in the support or non-support. I'd like to clarify that I do support this project. I think that this project is a good example of what should be or could be an acceptable form for increased density in a lot of different locations across the city, including this one. It's the, and it, it's also the type of development that could be owner-developed type project, so it, it shows a lot of potential. The pros of this are that the height is very close, if not matching, what the height allowance is under existing zoning for the RS5. The mass is broken up into two buildings to echo, in a way, the local patterns of garages and houses, and in some cases, houses and laneway houses. The style of the architecture itself, of pitched roofs, articulated massing, important trim details, also echoes local context, so it, it hits the mark on, on many things. And it adds density. It adds nine units of rental housing in, in an area that needs a lot more, plus the density itself brings the usual benefits that density brings to local businesses and the economy. It's also family-friendly, because it has three-bedroom and two-bedroom units as well. Some of the issues that have been raised by neighbours are parking. I think that it, it, it meets the requirements of parking with its four things off the lane. Also, most neighbours have garages and large frontages, because there are a lot of larger-sized wide lots in this area, so there should be a fair amount of parking, if necessary, on, on the street itself, and, and the, also the, the site itself is sixty-six feet wide, so that's three or four more parking spaces out on Dunbar. It also is close to transit and on or close to a bike path on Dunbar, so that would alleviate some of the need for parking as well. Another issue is trees. That's an issue on most sites, where you have the building envelope that will interfere with existing trees, and, and that's, that's an issue. The, the possible problems that have been raised, or one of the problems is that this is a rezoning. I think this is an example of the need for neighbourhood-based planning processes to help alleviate, alleviate many of the neighbouring concerns. The existing zoning in this area could possibly be massaged to accommodate a variety of building types and typologies like this one, in order to accommodate some of the density that needs to be accommodated across the city. There was an issue with the parking garage in the back that looked a little bit solid on the lane, that could be alleviated if you incorporated some green elements to minimise the massing of that garage and enhance the lane. There's also a talk of, if they save the tree on the northwest corner, that you could open up that area to more of a carport kind of thing, which would break down the massing as well. But if you had green walls or, or more vegetation around that, it would help to, to bring that into, it would mix in with the surrounding greenery better. There's worries about the, some of this rental turning into Airbnbs, that's an issue that maybe the city can address. In terms of trees, I personally think there needs to be a reexamination of the tree bylaw, more conifers in locations that makes sense than to just get in the way. So, general comments, low-massing, height limited, style contextually responsive, close to transit, better than assembled lots, which sometimes lead to larger massings, increased density.
We're just satisfied.
Yeah, neat, and the, one other thing, the need for data. We need the data showing how much added rentals the city actually needs, so that we can make a, a correct determination of how much rental we actually have, but this...
Thanks much, Brett, you're about thirty seconds over, but you do have questions?
Thanks.
I'm going to move on to councillor Dominado. Councillor Dominado, up to five minutes.
Hi, Mr Benj, how are you?
Hello, I'm good.
Hi, thanks for coming in, must be a little strange in there. I have a couple of quick questions. I, I, what I'm hearing from you is a lot of, a lot of positives, a lot of wins in this. I, I think you, you know, everybody knows this came under an interim rezoning policy that's been in place for a number of years, and has been in place even since we embarked on a citywide plan, and I heard your comments around sort of the need for neighbourhood-based planning. But I guess I want to ask you this question, is, is, this is a, from your perspective, it fits because it's, it's ground-oriented, it fits the local context, it adds gentle density, and, so is this something that you would like to see replicated in the city?
Um, replication is a careful word, so I would say it is a, a sensitivity towards good design that can be reproduced in different contexts, possibly with different results. But, yeah, I think it's a very good, it's been a very good effort on the part of the architects, designers, to make something useful in terms of rental accommodation within a neighbourhood that is like a lot of Westside neighbourhoods. It's, uh, large, single-family lots, and it takes advantage of that size and uses it well, I think.
Great. Just, I'll just remind councillor, again, we're talking about a specific rezoning, not a citywide policy, so if you just confine yourself to those questions, that would be great, thanks.
Uh, yeah, certainly. I did want, I had another question, now I've lost my train of thought. I'll put, I'll let councillor Frye go ahead and I'll come back to my next question.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Frye, please go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And thanks for coming in, Mr Benj, and appreciate you coming out to support this application. Also appreciate your comments about the garage. I also found that garage to be really out of sync with the rest of the design, which seemed pretty nice, but the garage seemed to be oddly placed and bulky and boxy and...
Just, we're on the, we're on the questions here?
It's, it's a bit of a boink, councillor Frye, I think, it's just a bit of a boink.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, so built for my, with the exception of the garage, it, it does seem to, like, work in your opinion, in the sort of Dunbar vernacular? Yes, is, I think what you have kind of...
Uh, if you're, did you ask, I'm sorry, I had a little bit of a problem hearing you. You said perhaps that, does it not fit the Dunbar vernacular?
You do feel it fits.
Yeah, no, it doesn't fit the Dunbar vernacular, but I think it doesn't necessarily have to. I think that you just have to break down that mass of it out there. I think you can make it more ventilated, if you want, for want of a better word, still providing security, but lightening it up. It's, it's a bit of a, it looks like the, the building block of the foundation, instead of something a little bit more friendly towards the lane. It just needs a little work, and I think the architects could do that. A little bit more detail, a little bit, you know, attention.
Okay, and because I'm not allowed to get into policy, I'm going to ask you this sort of more generally. Do you, do you think that, you know, in your professional opinion, because I know you're an architect, and this is the kind of work you do, do you think this is, is the kind of project that, that works from a, a, a sort of pro forma math kind of point of view?
That's a tough one. Um, because I do largely single-family, I don't do these kinds of things, so I'd rather leave that to someone else. I'm sorry to punt that down the road, but, and I have to clarify for anybody from the AIBC out there, I'm a designer.
Okay, also good to know. Thanks, Mr Benj, I can't ask about policy, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, thanks.
Okay, councillor Dominado, three minutes?
Thanks, I remember my question now. Mr Benj, I just wanted to ask you specifically about this project. Do you see it aiding in terms of affordability, when I consider the, the properties and homes in, in that neighbourhood, and the price point for purchasing a single detached home? Do you, do you see this as aiding with affordability?
I guess I could qualify and answer something like this, and I hate to kind of, but anyway, I will. I think as much as any other new project in the city approaches affordability, I think this one does. I think there's a variety of enough units here, and also you have to realise, it's in, it's in an area with higher-priced properties and stuff, and, so that makes it a little bit difficult, but I think it's safe to say it can approach affordability. That, you know, that's a tough one, that's the one we're wrestling with.
I hear you there, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks. That's it for questions for you, Mr Benj, and thank you very much for coming in.
You're welcome, and if I could say one more thing, I'm looking forward to seeing you all here in council chambers in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, that's it for registered speakers, I'm just going to read out the number, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, hashtag, sorry, six two oh eight eight hashtag to get on the list. I'm going to ask now to the clerks, is there anybody else in the council chambers to speak to this?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, there is no one in the chamber, but I would refer to the moderator for on the line.
Moderator?
I would like to remind everyone, if you would like to queue up to make a statement on this item, you can press star one on your keypad. But no one has joined as of yet. Oh, yes, someone just came. So, we have Jonathan Aitken, please go ahead.
Aitken, thank you, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Aitken, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Great. First of all, thank you very much, it's the very first time I've participated in a democratic process, so I'm, I'm not really sure exactly how to begin, but I, I do have a little bit of notes, so, so I live on Alma Street, across from the lane, and just a few houses down from the proposed project, and I just wanted to state categorically that I'm opposed to the project. The reasons that I am is, this is a nine-unit property with not, with twenty-five bedrooms in total, which I think, you know, you, you need to do that math to really figure out that number, and that's, I think, too many, and it's very much out of character for this neighbourhood. The implication of twenty-five bedrooms means that there could be twenty-five to fifty people on a single sixty-foot lot, and given that the high rental rate, this really, I don't think is an affordable for, for rental income, so we can only imagine that, you know, that will be at the higher end of the range, probably fifty people living in this property. So, in addition to that, you know, the, we do see a concern with the lane. The lane has always been a problem with various things, the trash, bylaw concerns, parking, it's quite a narrow dirt lane, and it, for those of you who aren't familiar with this, this lane, it's actually about four or five blocks long, with an L shape at the bottom. It's had problems in the past with people racing up and down the lane and, and using it as a cutoff to get down to Southwest Marine. So, for a while, there were speed bumps on it, and, and there's actually bollards at the bottom, because there had been problems with cars actually accidentally going through into the property at the bottom. But it is a very, very narrow lane. We think this project will just drastically exacerbate this problem. So the, the parking that's available in here is actually three and a half parking spots, so it says four, but it's three. There's like a, the, one of them is basically designed for a smart car, if you look at the layout. So, you know, we think that, you know, my wife and I both appreciate that the need for increasing density, but we don't believe that the surrounding area can really appropriately handle this load, and we don't really think that the consultation process has addressed the concerns. I attended both of the meetings at the Dunbar Community Centre. So, I think that's all the comments that I've seen. I know that there's quite a few other comments that were submitted fairly last minute, but they've been updated and reflected in the minutes, and I noted that there were twenty-eight people opposed to this and only three in favour. So I'd make sure, I would like to make sure that the councillor and the mayor take that into consideration. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for participating this evening, there are no questions for you, so that's it for, for tonight, and I'm just going to go back to the moderator and ask if there's anybody else who would like to participate on this item.
There is no one else at the moment that has queued up.
Okay, thanks very much. So I am going to call for a second time. If people would like to participate on this item, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code six two oh eight eight hashtag to get on the list. So that's a second call. And clerks, is there anybody else in the council chamber?
This is the clerk, and there is nobody in the chamber.
Thanks very much, I'm going to call one more time then, on phones, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero is the number, code six two oh eight eight hashtag. Moderator, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this?
Again, as a reminder, it's star one to queue up to make a statement, and no one has joined at the moment.
Thanks so much, and, uh, I'm going to take a...
Sorry to interrupt, Mr Mayor, two people have just joined just now. So, the first, yeah, the first one will be Tracy Pickett, please go ahead. Tracy, your line is open, you can go ahead.
Hello, thank you very much for taking my call. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine, you have up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Thank you. I am a resident in the area, and I am highly concerned about this particular project. My opposition is sort of based on three sort of clauses. One is that this, as far as my understanding, is based on a pilot project with respect to accessibility and having an area that's close to transit and everything else. As far as I understand, that pilot project within the city of Vancouver has never been experimented on in an area with a slope like this one does. It's a very steep, it's almost four hundred metres from Southwest Marine Drive up to Forty-first and Dunbar, which also includes three bus stops on the side of the road where this building is going to be. Parking and sightlines are already horrific. There has already been one cyclist killed on that stretch of road, and with buses weaving in and out to try and get to passengers, as well as, you know, the fact that there's going to be now limited parking, because there's only really three spots for parking in this building, is a real problem. The second issue is, in the winter, that hill is almost completely impassable. City transit buses cannot go up and down that hill. Most of the residents in the area park up at the Savon Foods at the top of the hill, because it's not safe to take your car, and it's certainly not safe to walk or try to walk that hill if there's any ice or snow, which has been extremely problematic in the last couple of years. The third issue is that, you know, this area has traditionally been a neighbourhood of families and, and children. There has not been a big need for single fam, for single housing or housing for couples. However, there is a desperate need for accessibility and access for children to be able to get to schools and, and everything else. You're right, it's an expensive neighbourhood, people can't afford to live here, and, you know, we need to bring kids back into the neighbourhood. Lastly, and I guess this is sort of a small point, most of the residents in this neighbourhood are a little bit elderly. They can't access this sort of format for discussion of these sort of discussions online. Even calling in myself was hard, I know you put out three calls just now, to try and access the phone line, so I, I don't know that you've necessarily got the full representation of the neighbourhood and what they see. You're right, it's an expensive neighborhood, people can't afford to live here, and, you know, we need to bring kids back into the neighborhood. Lastly, and I guess this is sort of a small point, most of the residents in this neighborhood are a little bit elderly. They can't access this sort of format for discussion of these sort of discussions online. Even calling in myself was hard. I know you've put out three calls just now to try and access the phone line, so I don't know that you've necessarily got the full representation of the neighborhood and what they feel. Those are my primary issues. I hope that you consider them. I did actually write these down and send them in to the city as well, but I didn't receive any response back, so those were my concerns.
Okay, thank you very much for calling in. I don't see any questions from council for you. I just wanted to thank you for participation, and I will go back to the moderator now for the second person you've indicated.
Yes, so the second one is Ian Watson. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Ian Watson, and I live about six or seven houses up Dunbar from the subject site. We've, just to give you probably some context, we've done all the gentle density things with our property. Built a lamey house the first time in the neighborhood and had it for rent for a few years now, and also have a basement suite, and we ride our bikes, et cetera, et cetera. But I have to say that I'm phoning in opposition to this particular resoning, and the reason for that is, I think it goes beyond the kind of gentle density that council's originally supporting for this neighborhood. I would support something smaller, certainly, you know, five units. For instance, something like I myself rented when I was younger in the Sixteenth and Arbutus area. That's kind of a very sustainable density that's been there for a very long time and provides a very stable neighborhood and provides kind of housing. It also allows for larger units. Our experience with renting our old lamey house is that there's actually very little demand from singles or even couples. The greatest demand is from families, and those families are not only looking for enough room to expand, but they're also looking for somewhere outside to play. Their children need to play outside. We're fortunate that we're... We have a nice side street that the kids can go out and do their roller hockey and get on their scooters, et cetera, et cetera. There's no opportunity like that for this particular site. There's no street on the front that they can play in, there's no street in the back, and there's absolutely nothing on the lot, nowhere for them to play, and all the parks are not very close by. I also wanna add that if you look to the school district boundaries, you'd find that this is actually on the edge of the Southland School, elementary school, and that most parents in this area are very concerned about how their children get to school, given they have to cross some very busy streets to get there. As noted before, it's on a very steep slope, it's at the bottom of a steep slope, and if you're gonna set a precedent for this kind of housing, you're best off locating it closer to flatter locations where you've got even better transit access. I mean, even three or four blocks north of this on Dunbar would have been much closer to the bus loop and to stores, et cetera, et cetera. It's an inaccessible site. There are certainly people in wheelchairs in this area, and we've even seen a crash as they went down Dunbar Street. Yes, there are cyclists who use this hill, but they're very aggressive training cyclists. We've actually seen somebody killed on Dunbar in front of our home. And so I wouldn't say that cycling is necessarily particularly safe. I guess the other comments about the trees, I know there's some talk about preserving that Douglas fir. I happen to know that it's not possible to save a Douglas fir in such a small area. They do have large, wide-ranging root systems, and they actually have very few large roots, and if you lose only one or two of them, you lose the entire tree. And in fact, that particular tree, given how close it is to property line, is actually an incredibly well-suited tree because you should be able to develop around it. In favor of one of the earlier speakers, you know, the building at the back is much larger than anything else in the area, whereas the main building may be of the same sort of scale as a house that's permitted under RS5, the large building at the back is much bigger than anything ever permitted. I think that's all my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening, and I don't see any questions for you, so appreciate your perspective. Can I go back to the moderator and ask if there's anybody else on the line?
Yes, just before the next speaker, I just wanna remind everyone to press star one if you'd like to queue up to make a statement, and the next speaker is Alexander Wright. Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm speaking this evening. I intended just to write an email, but I think it got misfiled to another application. So I just wanted to register my support of this application and this project. I'm a resident of the city of Vancouver. I don't live in this neighborhood, but my family has lived here, I wanna say, since about 2005, so I have pretty good familiarity of kind of the Dunbar, Southland's area. I would say, looking back, if you go to 2005 and compare that to now, it's a much quieter neighborhood. There seems to be less people out and about. It's not as vibrant as it once may have been. It never was the liveliest neighborhood in the city of Vancouver, but certainly, I'd say, even comparing back fifteen years ago, you would have seen more vibrancy in this community. And I think, I'd really like to stress that, you know, I'm in my thirties, I guess, on the youngish side of things, and I think it's a bit dangerous to define neighborhood character in terms of architecture or buildings. I think probably they should be defined in terms of people, right? And my observation, having spent some time in this neighborhood over the past fifteen years, is that you've just not seen as many families and young people living in this neighborhood. This is a fantastic location, it's right next to kind of a major transit route out to UBC, is a great area potentially for families to live in, and I guess the fact of the matter is it's become a very unaffordable place for almost anyone to live in. And I think, you know, it's a little development, nine potential homes for people, but I think if we're gonna make progress as a city, I think it's gonna be through adding homes like this in neighborhoods like Dunbar. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. There's no questions for you, so I'm gonna move on back to the moderator. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this?
Yes, we do have one more speaker, Brian McCormack. Please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'd like to comment on the suitability of the project being called as Suitable Housing for Family. I guess the number of children that you might expect with nine units could be anywhere up to like eighteen childrens perhaps. And if you read the plan of the project, you'll see how much space is available for the nine units, which would be available to up to, well, sixteen children on the property and its surroundings. The outside courtyard of twenty-four feet area between the two buildings will not likely meet the needs of children. Unfortunately, the sloping and uneven lane lacks, creates, it's not a suitable play space for the kids. The park was mentioned, the closest park identified to the development is Muscliam Park, and that's located south of Southwest Marine Drive, and for children to access this park, they would need to cross Southwest Marine Drive at Alma Street, which has no crosswalk, and they would have to continue walking south on the road as there is no sidewalk in front of the residences. And it is a rural area, and in order to access the grass park, this area has no play structures at present. Schools, access to Southland's Elementary is less than desirable for this project. It's located on the furthest eastern boundary for the catchment area of Southland School, and that's about a kilometer and a half away, and it requires crossing Forty-first Avenue. And for the high school kids, Point Gray would be in their catchment area, and that's two point nine kilometers distant. Parking, it's been mentioned several times, but it wouldn't be sufficient for the needs of the families. All of the amenities for the families are up the hill at Dunbar and Forty-first, and that is a long walk. It's approximately an eight percent grade, and that would probably encourage people not to walk or cycle up the hill to do their grocery shopping, but to drive their cars, so the traffic would be increased. And it's just a very busy spot with high traffic areas, Marine Drive with the traffic these days going in and out of UBC, just a few doors down to the south. Dunbar Street is becoming increasingly difficult... Increasingly busy because of that traffic. And Forty-first, the same thing, it's recently been widened to accommodate articulated buses which use the Dunbar Street in front of this development. It's just a very busy area, not suitable for families. And what would happen is probably, as it becomes apparent that it's not a good spot for children, the units could possibly be turned into units where six or seven... Well, what's been going on in the area, a lot of the empty homes have been turned into rentals for university students, and there have been problems with noise, trash, and things like that. But anyways, it's an overbuilt, it's an overbuilt project in a very busy area, not suitable for children, and I think the city can do a better job of selecting projects that would fit the situation. That's all.
Thank you so much for your time. There are no questions for you, sir, so I just appreciate you phoning in this evening. Back to the moderator.
As a reminder, you may queue up by pressing star one on your keypad to make a statement, and no one has queued up at the moment.
Thanks so much. And, okay, council, we're gonna take five minutes to... Just a five-minute recess just to make sure if anybody else has a desire to speak on this item, they can call in, 1-833-353-8610. Code 62088 hashtag. So council, it is seven forty-two, we'll come back at seven forty-seven. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Hi, counsel, we're gonna take one minute left. I'm just gonna go to the moderator and ask if there's, uh, anybody else that's phoned in.
So as a reminder, you may queue up to make a statement by pressing star one, and nobody has queued up at the moment.
Okay, thanks, uh, counsel. So I have called three times, and, uh, so I am going to cl- and then I'll say here to speak, so I'm gonna close the, uh, speaker's list now, and as there were, uh, fewer, no public comments received after five PM today, we're gonna close the receipt of public comments, and moving, uh, to hearing closing comments and asking further questions and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any, uh, closing comments?
Yeah, hi, hi there, I just wanted to clarify, uh, one thing. Uh, it, there's been, um, some comments about the numbers of park installs. We do actually show four, um, standard-sized vehicle spaces. Uh, we made, I guess, the unfortunate traffic decision to show a smart car in one of them, so it gives a false impression that that's, uh, a smaller space, a small car space, or a smaller than regular space, but it is, uh, when dimensioned, in fact, a standard vehicle space. So I just wanted to make that point there.
Okay.
Just the second point I wanted to make is I, I did miss, uh, misspeak earlier when I asked about, uh, rents that the client, uh, that the developer is currently considering. Uh, while she hasn't made up her mind, uh, what she's told us to date, uh, in consultation with her, um, uh, with her business, um, counselors, is that, uh, probably the starting rents will be, um, uh, likely will be, uh, somewhat less than those currently trying to report to James. Uh, so those are the points of clarification I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, staff, have any closing comments?
Uh, no co- no closing comments.
Great, thanks. Counsel, have any questions for staff? Counselor Frye, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, uh, in reading through some of the letter comments that we received, there were some concerns around the current, uh, maintenance of the property, uh, that the owner had sort of neglected some basic maintenance stuff, uh, to the point that some were suggesting it was a bit of a nuisance property. I'm wondering if you can tell me how this might, uh, uh, this project will be managed? So will there be a property management company operating this? Uh, what kind of standards and expectations could we have on this project?
Over to staff.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I thought that was addressed to the applicant.
No, I'm sorry, as counselors know, we, uh, are, we can only ask questions of the applicant in the first portion of the hearing, so only staff can answer at this, uh, at this phase. So, over to staff. Do you have an answer for Counselor Frye?
All I can say is that, uh, of course, it's incumbent upon any landlord or owner to make sure they rent to, you know, to, uh, you know, responsible tenants and that they ma- manage the property. We've, the question has come up at the open houses whether there'd be an onsite manager, and the, the response has been that the site is just too small to have an onsite manager, but the owner, or and the owner's representatives would always be available to, uh, deal with, with problems or, or onsite.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Counselor Frye?
Uh, I think that's okay for right now, I'll just, uh, hold on that for a sec.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Bly, up to five minutes. Uh, questions to staff?
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. I just, um, wanted to follow up on a question or a comment made by one of the speakers regarding, um, uh, safety, um, and traffic, and given that some of these units are geared towards families, I just wonder if staff can comment on plans or, um, uh, adjustments to the, to the existing, um, um, setup that will ensure safety as perhaps, um, more families will move into this development if it goes ahead tonight.
Hello, it's Rosemary Drasovich with the Transportation Division. Thank you for your question. Um, yes, engineering staff have reviewed the application with respect to, um, safety impacts, um, with respect to, um, access and lane impacts, um, and have not identified any serious concerns with the development or as a result of the development. Uh, I'll note though, however, that the development is going to be responsible for a number of off-site improvements to further improve, um, safety and access to the site regardless, and that's going to include things like new and widened sidewalks and boulevards along the frontage to provide space, um, for pedestrians between giving them more walking space and separation from vehicle traffic, as well as things like street lighting for roadway and sidewalk, as well as, um, lane regrading adjacent to the site to improve the lane conditions as well.
Okay, so just specifically then, speaking to the, um, concern of one speaker regarding a crosswalk, and I'm familiar with the area, and traffic can come up pretty quickly from Southwest Marine Drive there at Dunbar towards Forty First. Do we see, and we've got questions across the city around various areas that need crosswalks, I just wonder if we are missing an opportunity here to ensure that we've, um, provided adequate, uh, um, crosswalks to, for, for families to, to cross, and I think there was mention of a local park. So if you could just comment specifically to that, then that, that will be all for me. Thank you.
Uh, sorry, just, I'll hold on a second. Um, Rosemary is just looking up something on the computer, and she'll be with us shortly.
Thank you.
Uh, counselor, so your question is related to the crossing at Dunbar and Southwest Marine? That's, um, that's a specific question that you're asking, um, that's correct?
Well, I, I mean, I'm familiar, but I don't know exactly the cross street where this, um, this intersect with a, an, a local park that one speaker spoke of.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, to access the local park, one would have to cross Southwest Marine, and at the end of Dunbar, um, the intersection of Dunbar and Southwest Marine is currently serviced by a full traffic signal with, uh, crosswalks, so there, that is the most immediate, um, safe crossing for any residents of this development, and that's, um, you know, within a one-minute walk from the site, that would get them safely across Southwest Marine, um, and then towards the park. The park, Musqueam Park is located just southwest of this site from there. There is currently a, a safe crossing available.
That's, that's great, that's what I thought, I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Domino, up to five minutes.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and this is a question to staff as well. Uh, it was in the same vein around the, um, safe crossings, but I do wanna follow up. I appreciate the question by Counselor Bly about the crossing at, at Dunbar and Southwest Marine, but, um, I do recall the resident mentioned a lack of sidewalks on Southwest Marine, and I do recall walking there, um, as well, and there not being sidewalks, and I'm not sure if it's on both the north and south sides of the street. Um, if maybe staff could elaborate on that as well in terms of if there's any necessary upgrades, um, needed.
Rosemary Drasovich, Transportation. Again, there are currently sidewalks on, I believe, the north side of Southwest Marine, but, um, that's correct. There are currently no sidewalks on the south side of Southwest Marine, uh, in this area. Um, the development is responsible for public realm improvements directly on their frontage, but typically, um, through development, the rezoning process, the development wouldn't be responsible for additional, um, frontage improvements well beyond their site. Um, typically, uh, additional sidewalks are, you know, they can be delivered through a number of ways, either through development or through, uh, local improvements program, which is something that residents can request through the city by calling 311 or going online as well.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Thanks.
May I thank you? Uh, Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yep, thank you. Um, my question's on the safety of, of Banass, so I'll keep moving for efficiency. Um, one is relation to the affordable housing choices interim rezoning policy, and I've been scouring through it and the referral report. Can you clarify, 'cause I'm not seeing explicit references, I'm missing it, whether or not there's a covenant on these units similar to, say, the MRT program where the, they're secured as, as rentals for life of the building, or can they become something else?
Yeah, there, there is a housing agreement and it's, which would secure the rental tenure for the, for the life of the building or sixty years, whichever is, uh, greater.
Okay, and that's in Appendix B? Is that what it is?
Yes.
To find out, okay.
It, it may be in the body of the report too, it should be, uh, but that's, that's the case in all of these projects.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that to be explicitly clear. And then my second question, um, just related to the reference lane issues or concerns that have been raised about suggesting that that's narrow, and I know you said engineering looked at it. Are there any further anticipated, um, enhancements or, um, mitigation measures that are being considered?
Thank you for your question. So as part of this development, um, the most immediate mitigation measure, um, to address the lane is that the development will be responsible for repaving and regrading the lane directly adjacent to their site. Uh, but beyond that, there aren't additional, um, measures that the site will be develop- or the site will be responsible for delivering across the rest of the length of the lane.
Okay, so no other sort of safety measures or, or practical measures in terms of servicing, um, police pickup, anything of that nature? Just given the comments also about the narrowness on some of the speakers?
Uh, so the narrowness, what I'll note about the narrowness is that this is a standard twenty-foot lane, that's the standard width across the entire city for, uh, for lanes. Um, what perhaps is adding to the perceived narrowness of the lane is that they, maybe sections of the lane, um, that have encroachments, whether it's property or landscaping or something of that nature. Um, so that quite often adds to a perception that lanes are narrower than they, they actually are. Uh, encroachments of that nature can be reported or, um, brought up to the city's property use group for enforcement or inspection. But this is a standard twenty-foot lane, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then the final question, a third and quick one hopefully, is, uh, one of, to one of the comments raised by one speaker around feeling that they, I think, sort of stated they were supportive of units but not this many, and why could it, for example, not be five units on a site versus nine? Does staff have comments on that in terms of the allowable FSR or the number of units that's appropriate for a site of this size?
Yes, the HC policy does not prescribe a maximum density or a unit count. Uh, what it does say is that it's up to three and a half or four stories, um, and it's subject to design performance, so all the things we go through with, with dealing with, uh, 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 proximity and context. But there is no prescribed, uh, unit density. That's usually a decision made by the developer to ensure that the project's viable.
Okay, and given the fact that you said it's a sixty-six-foot wide lot by hundred and thirty deep, staff's feeling is that nine units is reasonable for the size of this lot?
Yes, and the density is, is commensurate with, with typical townhouse forms of this nature, so it's, it's, uh, it's a reasonable fit.
Okay, I'll leave it there, thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Uh, that's it for questions, uh, from counselors. So, counsel, I'll need somebody to move the motion with the yellow memo. Counselor Frye?
I'm moved.
Yeah, I'm prepared to move the motion with the yellow memo. Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Domino, a second?
Boyle.
Counselor Boyle, okay, thanks. Uh, so we're into, uh, debate and decision. If anybody wants to speak to this, please put yourself on the queue. Counselor Hardwick, uh, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Very briefly, uh, while in principle I support the form of gentle density, um, as the application suggests, the fact that, uh, this, uh, application is backed up by the Housing Vancouver Strategy and targets, um, gives me pause. Again, and I'm looking very forward to getting, uh, updated data so that we can do, uh, more complete analysis and recalibrate the Housing Vancouver Strategy going forward. And, sorry, there's some interference there, I just wanted to...
I guess ask people to mute in the background, please? Uh, just check if, see if you're on mute. Counselor Hardwick, please go ahead.
So the fact that, um, that the underpinning of this is, is based on, uh, the Housing Vancouver Strategy as yet to be recalibrated, uh, gives me pause. I do, um, again, I do support in principle the gentle density that is exemplified by this application, but I'm concerned and, and needed once again to express my concerns that it makes it difficult to vote one way or the other when the underlying assumptions on which these plans that are being used, um, to justify these policies, um, are not supportable. Uh, that gives me pause. So I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle, up to five minutes.
Thanks, I'll be, uh, supporting this, um, and just wanna say, like, every project, I don't think any one project will solve the housing crisis. Um, but I did grow up, uh, three blocks from this development. Um, it was, uh, despite also growing up on a hill, a great neighborhood to, uh, live in, um, and very walkable to many places. Um, and most of the kids I grew up with there don't live in the neighborhood anymore because there is nowhere in the neighborhood for them to live, um, and raise a family. And I, I think, you know, when we talk about multifamily housing projects, particularly on the east side of the city, gentrification comes up a lot. I think it's really important that we recognize that the impacts of housing pressures are about where we build, they're also about where we don't build, and the fact that we haven't been building, uh, a range of more affordable housing options for families in some neighborhoods of this city, like the one I grew up in, um, has an impact in many other neighborhoods of the city. So, uh, while, again, these rental units won't be affordable to everyone, they will be affordable to, um, many, uh, of the types of kids and families I grew up in with that, uh, in that neighborhood with, and who I know would have liked to be able to stay in the neighborhood and live near, uh, grandparents, um, and raise their kids there, but again, they weren't able to, and so they've moved elsewhere in the city, uh, and this is the type of project I think allows people to stay in the neighborhood, um, and allows the neighborhood to invite more people in, in a way that, as one of the speakers said, adds to the type of character of a neighborhood that is all about the people living in that neighborhood. So, uh, happy to support this for all of those reasons.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I appreciate, uh, hearing from some of our speakers tonight and, um, recognizing some of the comments that they made, and was happy to follow up on some of those concerns with staff. Um, I am struck, um, by a lot of commentary that I've heard from people living in this neighborhood that they feel that there's a hollowing out and a loss of families and a loss of kids in the area. Um, and I was looking at some of the correspondence we received, and there was one email that struck me, um, from a person who said they were writing in support, "I'm very supportive of this proposal for an innovative missing middle development close to us on Dunbar. Our neighborhood has been stagnating in population and has certainly become well beyond the price range of ordinary people, and especially young families. Most redevelopment so far has required land assemblies to build large low-rise apartment buildings. It seems strange that in a modern neighborhood city to have only two choices, single-family homes or apartment living, and we welcome this addition to the type of housing and hope this city will go on to prove many different housing types and creative ways to use single lots, um, that allow people to have more windows and a less obtrusive presence in neighborhoods. Um, I'm seeing other neighborhoods allow this, and it would be wonderful to do so in, in Dunbar also." Um, and I think that that's an important point to reference. We've heard recently that we have fifty-two percent renters. We've heard that seventy-six percent of the new households in the city of Vancouver are rental. Um, this one is Town Homes, which is, I would describe as gentle density. Um, and it's also a hundred percent family units, which is very unusual, um, to see in a project, particularly with three and four bedrooms. Um, and the other thing I note, like, given it's a hundred percent rental and those rental units are secured, um, that it does provide a more affordable option, granted you have to have two reasonable and solid incomes. Um, however, if you're paying potentially thirty-eight hundred a month to rent a three-bedroom for a family versus the other alternative of more than eighty-five hundred, um, for a mortgage for a three-bedroom in the same neighborhood, that's just beyond a lot of people's means and ability to do that and support a family at the same time. And so I'm guided by that in terms of weighing the decision. Um, and I do think that there are, you know, opportunities to continually improve safety, and we see that with some of the slow streets and other work that's happening. Um, but based on those reasons, I will support this project. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yes, um, I'm, of course, not liking that there's no affordability for median-income renters. And, uh, but on the other hand, um, the new housing will be a little cheaper than what's there now, and we're not gonna be looking at... and we're not going to be looking at any gentrification in that neighborhood, I don't think. So I'll be supporting it.
Councillor Dominado.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and, um, I'll be, I'll start by saying, uh, I appreciate the, all of the speakers who called in, uh, this evening and also came in person. I appreciate, uh, the different perspectives and I appreciate that, and I think, you know, councillor Kirby Young, um, hit the nail on the head in terms of, on the one hand, we have our hearing from residents about, um, the, the shift they've seen in their neighborhoods. And I've heard this from other residents before as well, and, and, um, in, in some cases describing their neighborhoods as a bit of a ghost town, that, you know, the kids have grown up, they've moved out, but in that timeframe, uh, since their kids have grown up, no new families have come in. And so you don't have new children, you don't have that, that renewal. Um, and, and much of that being tied to the inaccessibility of, uh, of, you know, for those who are aspiring to homeownership, um, the inaccessibility of, of homeownership, but also, uh, rental tenure, they're not simply being not, um, uh, reasonable options, uh, for families. And I can say that, um, so I appreciate that that, that there's that tension and, and it means change, and, and there can be a bit of a discomfort with that. Uh, but I also think that, you know, and, and Mr. Benj spoke to this as, uh, the, um, and that he was very approving of this project in, in describing how it fit with the local context in terms of the style, in terms of the massing, in terms of being ground-oriented housing. Um, talked about the connection to transit and to the university. And so I think there's a lot of positives here, but I, I, you know, I know we're only speaking specifically to this project this evening, but, um, I do think, my own personal perspective is that we need to see more of this type of housing in the city. And I certainly heard that, um, when I was running. And, and I, I know families still to this day who couldn't kind, find the right fit of housing for their needs. And so they do not live in the city of Vancouver, they live in, um, our neighboring cities, and they now drive in or commute in. And they would have jumped at the chance for, uh, a rental opportunity like this, or in other cases, we've seen some homeownership options, uh, ground-oriented townhomes. Uh, so I, I personally think that, um, it is a, a shift from what is there now. Um, but we do need to acknowledge, um, that there is a need, um, and it's not all about numbers. I know we keep on coming back to the data, and I think that that's important. Um, but at the same time, it's also about choices and providing people with choices. And, uh, we, there haven't been choices. Uh, councillor, uh, Boyle spoke to growing up in this neighborhood. I didn't grow up in that neighborhood, but she can speak to that as a lived experience and what she's had growing up and what she sees now and, and the inaccessibility. So, uh, to me, it's about housing choices, and, and this was one of the top issues I remember hearing about when I was running. And so, uh, I appreciate the application, um, and supportive of it this evening.
Thank you councillor Frye, up to five minutes.
And I won't take five minutes. Mayor, I know we have a lot of speakers coming up, uh, and I don't want to repeat a lot of what's already been said. I do, uh, note that one of the earlier speakers talked about the loss of kids in the neighborhood. And I think that this project does provide that opportunity to bring kids back to the neighborhood. I think there's some important things that have been highlighted here around sidewalk safety. And I know that's something that we've been looking at as this council, um, and I think that that's something, you know, uh, I note that that neighborhood still has lots of parts of it where there are actually no physical sidewalks and people are forced to walk on the, uh, shoulder of the road. And I think that's something that we, as a council, need to continue to push on when we talk about road safety and especially, uh, as we're encouraging family housing, and there are some excellent parks nearby, but they do require a walk. The gentleman who mentioned earlier the distance to Strathcona Elementary, I used to walk a kilometer and a half to Strathcona Elementary, and this is only a kilometer away, so I know it can be done, and Curersdale's even closer. Um, I, I do want to, uh, also highlight that issue with the garage, and I hope that that'll be, uh, looked at at UDP. I think that garage really could use a little bit of finessing as far as the design. And also I do want to highlight some of the concerns that have been expressed in the letters about, um, the, the treatment, the, the landowners' treatment of the property and kind of neglect of it. And I hope that we don't see that moving forward, uh, as this project. And I hope that this is a really, uh, fantastic contribution to the neighborhood and starts to help revitalize that neighborhood. As I think that, as many have alluded, there's, there's certainly some revitalization that could happen and to keep Dunbar alive. Thanks.
Councillor Weep?
Um, yeah, I'd like to follow up on the garage. I think there's an opportunity there to soften the look, um, and also ensure that that Douglas fir does have, um, the longevity and we ensure the vitality of that tree because I think it's important on the alley scale. Um, I'm also supportive of seeing the amount of, uh, bedrooms and family housing moving to the neighborhood. And I am starting to hear a bit of a vibe that Dunbar is, um, coming back. The Sodas has just got a renovation going on and should open this weekend, um, and we're starting to see a little more movement. So hopefully as we do the Vancouver Plan, we'll find ways to ensure that every neighborhood has that kind of energy, and I am supportive of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, council. That's, uh, it for debate from what I can see, so I need somebody to move the motion.
Councillor Kirby Young.
I think I heard councillor Frye first, followed by councillor Kirby Young, so, um, uh, great. Sorry, clerks, I think we're, it's just, wait a second, it's just one second, thank you.
We did.
Clerks, uh, just one second. Clerks, we've already moved this, so I'm just going to the vote now. So please disregard that last, uh...
We got it, Mayor Stewart.
We got a vote, just like double-doubled. Okay, doubled, seconded, seconded twice, we're good. It's very moved.
Kind of privileged, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councillor Dejanova?
I'll need a vote assist in favor, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council, that has passed with none in opposition. And the clerks can just flash that up on the screen for everybody, and then we can move on to the, uh, next item. Okay, council, we're moving on to the third item for this evening, and just going to queue it up here. There we go, it's, uh, four seven five zero Granville Street, and I have the clerk read the application, please.
This is an application by Stuart Howard Architects to rezone four seven five zero Granville Street and fourteen ninety-four West Thirty-Second Avenue from RS five, one-family dwelling district to CD one, comprehensive development district, to permit the development of a four-story residential building with eighty-one secured market rental units. A maximum height of thirteen point three meters and a floor space ratio of one point six are proposed. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Two hundred and twenty pieces of correspondence in support of the application, two hundred and two pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application, three pieces of correspondence addressing other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately four P M. today.
Thanks so much, and, uh, we have lots of speakers, so of course we're going to have, um, a, uh, presentation by James Bolt from the Rezoning Centre. Uh, I just want to remind speakers that would like to speak to this, the number is one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, participant code six two oh eight eight hashtag to get on the list. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Bolt, who I believe has eighteen slides for us.
Uh, thank you. Um, can everybody hear me and see the slides?
Just checking now, I can definitely hear you, and I am, we're just, uh, I'm looking at the public screen at the moment and just waiting for the clerks to move that over, and here they come, and they are up now. Mr. Bolt, so whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is James Bolt, uh, rezoning planner in the Housing Priorities Division of the Rezoning Centre. The purpose of this report is to assess an application for an eighty-one unit secured rental, residential rental apartment building at four seven five zero Granville Street and thirteen ninety-four West Thirty-Second Avenue under the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy, commonly known as the AHC policy. The site is currently zoned RS five and is located in the Shaughnessy neighborhood on the northeast corner of the intersection of Granville Street and West Thirty-Second Avenue. The RS five district schedule permits single-family housing, including laneway housing. The surrounding zoning is also RS five, and the area has seen little in the way of new zoning or major development for decades. Within a fifteen-minute walk of the site are several parks, schools, and a few daycares as shown on this map. The site is not within a typical walking distance to a shopping area, but is located along a major transit route with regular bus service. The current site is composed of two existing parcels occupied by single-family houses with a lane running north-south at the rear of the lots. The parcels along Granville Street are large and generally occupied by houses built after the nineteen forties. Our rezoning application for four five seven five Granville Street under the AHC policy, adjacent to the Vancouver Hospice Society, as shown here, was hired by council at a recent public hearing in two thousand and nineteen and was not approved. I, uh, this slide is the same as the last one. I will just briefly go over it again. This is the AHC policy. The one thing I will note here is that, uh, the AHC policy only allowed, uh, two projects within ten blocks of each other along an arterial. And because of this, in this area, there were only two properties, uh, projects accepted, the subject one and four five seven five noted earlier. No other applications were received in this area due to this ten-block restriction. The AHC policy allows for development in RS and RT-zoned areas. As I noted earlier in the other presentation, there was originally a twenty-project cap, but this was removed. Uh, the policy does allow for three and a half townhouse story forms, but the policy was also amended to allow four-story secured, uh, sorry, four-story apartment forms. In this area, there were only two properties, uh, projects accepted, the subject one and four five seven five noted.
Um... Sorry, I'm just going to stop you there. Uh, it does seem like your audio has changed pretty significantly, uh, Mr. Bolt. Uh, clerks, is something that happened there?
That, that wasn't me. I don't know who that was.
Okay, thanks. It must have been, uh, one of the callers, uh, who wants to get in, so, sorry, I just let you continue. Maybe, maybe you can go back, uh, just two or three minutes.
Uh, I'll just say that, um, so the policy does allow for four-story apartment buildings in these areas. And so the application for four seven five zero Granville Street is indeed for a four-story secured residential rental apartment building, uh, as I noted, which is allowable under this policy. Uh, the project proposes eighty-one secured rental residential dwelling units, a minimum of thirty-five percent, which are two or more bedrooms. The height and density proposed are commensurate with typical apartment developments of the scale. Ample underground off-street parking is also proposed, which exceed the minimum requirements. As well, as noted here, as, as part of the, uh, initiatives of the Restart Smart Vancouver, this project is estimated to create approximately two hundred and eighty construction jobs. Under the AHC policy, uh, projects are to be informed by applicable area design guidelines, in this case, the RS five guidelines. Uh, sorry, my mistake, wrong slide. The configuration of this building was determined by areas where onsite trees could be retained, retained as described in the report, including a large western red cedar on the west side. In turn, these areas determine the location and configuration of the parquet ramp as shown here by the yellow arrow. Under the AHC policy, projects are to be informed by applicable area design guidelines, in this case, the RS five guidelines, which emphasize a contextual response. In this respect, the building was designed to have as much of a residential vernacular expression as possible by stepping back the top floors and using material appropriate for smaller-scale residential development. On Granville Street, as shown here, uh, the retention of the western red cedar allows the massing to be broken up into two blocks. On the wide west Thirty-Second Avenue, uh, frontage, the building is also stepped in facets to break up horizontal massing. Extensive landscaping is proposed to soften the edges of the site. In this rendering, we also see the entrance to the parquet ramp as well as the expression of the rear of the building facing the lane. A zoning comparison is provided in Appendix F of the report, but a couple items are noted here. As I, as can be seen, although the building has an apartment form, its height is designed, being designed to get as close to the RS five height as possible by limiting incursions and setting the main floor at or below grade slightly. Uh, note that this is a, this is a diagrammatic, uh, representation. I believe the architect has one that, uh, more accurately plots the actual height in the section. The slide shows typical west-side rents and typical cost for renting and ownership. Rents are based on thirty percent of gross income. On the right-hand side, I provided some income data, uh, for the neighborhood. Uh, one quarter of the households in the area are renters, which is lower than the city average. At the bottom right, I've shown the average salaries for single and couple households in the area. One can see that renting is a viable option for couples in the area who could afford to rent a three-bedroom unit, but only perhaps purchase a one-bedroom condo. Single-person households would find either a challenge owning or renting. The AHC policy was not intended to create affordability for all residents of the city, but rather increase the supply of housing alternatives and increase the supply, uh, of rental housing, which would help address Vancouver's very low vacancy rate and over time, hopefully, flatten rental costs. This project, uh, generated a high degree of public interest. The open houses were well-attended and over, uh, a hundred and fifty residents and households responded. The main concerns are shown here, and these are addressed in more detail in the report along with other concerns and comments received. In conclusion, uh, staff, uh, feel that the project has done a good job in fitting an apartment form, which is permitted in the policy, into the neighborhood and responds appropriately to its context in a manner appropriate, uh, anticipated by the AHC policy. The project would contribute eighty-one rental units to the targets of the Vancouver Housing Strategy and contribute to addressing the city's low vacancy rate. As a consequence, staff are supportive and recommend council approve the recommendation of this report. And finally, one item, uh, similar to the last one, you have before you a yellow memo, uh, which requires your action approval in conjunction with the recommendations and the summary and recum, uh, summary and recommendations for this item. The changes respect to the engineering conditions in Appendix B. The conditions in the report were incomplete, which was staff's error. That's, and it was, uh, my bad again. Uh, the revised conditions in the yellow memo are complete and formatted correctly. The yellow memo contains some additional, uh, uh, service agreement conditions, which are consistent with routine engineering requirements. Staff have discussed these with the developer, who has no concerns and had anticipated these requirements. It is recommended that council move a motion to approve the memo in conjunction with the other recommendations in the summary and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, for your presentation. I just wonder, is the, uh, is the applicant here?
You guys? Hi.
Hi, we can hear you, and it looks like you also have slides to present to us?
We do.
I'll just get the clerk to, uh, I, I can see it up now on the public screen, so if you want to go ahead, please, uh, whenever you're free.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for hearing our application to bring high-quality rental housing to a neighborhood that is significantly lacking in the semenity. My name is Richard Whitstock, and I'm founder and principal of council. We're a Vancouver-based developer of multi-family housing who strive to provide a high-quality, attainable multi-family housing to the region's missing middle. With me I have Neil Robertson from Stuart Howard Architects, who will also present, as well as other members of our development team, who are able to answer any questions you may have about our proposal. Slide, please? Has the slide changed?
Oh, it hasn't changed yet. Uh, clerks, can we change the slide?
We're not able to see the slides at all, so...
Just waiting for the clerks to change it. I'll let you know when they have changed. There we go, community engagement is the next slide.
No, there should be a slide number two. That's, is there slide number two?
Uh, Domus Cootney Holdings at the top?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So Granville Street, um, proposal is our third rental project undertaken in partnership with Cootney Holdings, a multi-generational west-side-based family business. Our joint mission is to develop high-quality, purpose-built rental apartment projects and offer a high level of amenity and livability to their residents. Our first two projects, called Laurel and Victoria, are currently under construction and are shown here. Both of these projects have taken to heart the principles of active design. The buildings are constructed around a common courtyard with a prominent central exterior stair. This design is intended to encourage walking and, and discourage the use of the elevator to foster interaction between neighbors and a sense of community that's often missing in traditional buildings. All of our buildings are designed to be bike-friendly and pet-friendly. Homes are designed with intention to create flexible indoor and outdoor spaces, including home offices, generous spaces, both private and shared. Slide, please?
Community engagement?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so the project was initiated in twenty eighteen by the existing homeowners, uh, longtime Shaughnessy residents, who were looking to downsize out of their large property into something more in line with their empty nester lifestyle. They held their initial priority... They held their initial pre-opportunity open house in December 2018. We became involved in the project in the spring of 2019. We held a second developer-led open house in September 2019. Responding to comments from the community, as well as from city staff, we reduced the density, height, and massing, and increased setbacks from adjoining properties. We resubmitted drawings in late 2019 and undertook further community consultation throughout the spring. The city-led open house and urban design panel review were held in March of this year. In the interim, we have continued dialogue with the immediate neighbors and commissioned additional view, shadow, and transportation studies to provide a precise analysis of our building's impact on their properties. Again, Neil Robertson can speak to these analysis in greater detail. What I can speak to, however, is the role that our building will play in shielding neighbors from the considerable street noise that emanates from Granville Street. We met with the neighbors, both in the laneway between our property and theirs and in their backyard. In both cases, the street noise was at a level where we had to really strain to hear each other from a physically distant separation. It's our opinion that our building will make a significant positive contribution to the livability of their backyard by removing the majority of this ambient street noise. Slide, please.
Declining population in Second Shawnee City.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, the declining population of Shawnee City has been a long-term trend, to the point where the population has fallen nineteen percent since 1971, according to the city's Shawnee City Neighborhood Social Indicators Profile 2019 document. During that time, the population of the city as a whole has increased by forty-eight percent. In other words, the city has grown by eighty-two percent more than Shawnee City has over the past forty-five years. The graph shown on the left shows a six-and-a-half percent population decline from, uh, from the second Shawnee census act surrounding our site between the last two census periods alone, representing a loss of two-hundred-and-sixty-two people from the neighborhood in a five-year period. Even more dramatic, though, is the lot of children in Shawnee City, as shown by the, the graph on the right. Our analysis of Second Shawnee City specifically shows a decline in the number of children, um, of fifteen percent over the past ten years. The twenty-five children approximately that we think our project will add will stabilize this trend to a small extent. Furthermore, the city's analysis of, in the population of young families is rather alarming. The city's analysis of the 2016 census shows a decline in children aged zero to four of a staggering nineteen-point-four percent in just this five-year period between the 2011 and 2016 census. All of this is to say that if we're interested in having complete neighborhoods, Shawnee City is failing by any metric. We believe that our project will help steady this trend by introducing a little bit of diversity into the, into the neighborhood. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about who our residents are going to be. Our proposed building is located in Vancouver's geographic center and is a ten-minute walk from the campus of BC Women's Hospital, BC Children's, Sunny Hill Health Center, Tech Acute Care Center, and the BC Children's Research Institute. Over four-five-hundred people are currently employed on this rapidly-growing health campus. I've been reading all the letters of support that have been coming in and have been really pleased to see the number of comments from people that work in healthcare, especially during this time. The project has good access to downtown in the Broadway corridor. The number ten bus stops directly in front of the site and will transport residents to the Broadway subway in seven minutes or to the downtown peninsula in fourteen minutes. We expect a large proportion of our tenants will take advantage of these transit links and will choose our location for this reason. We therefore expect a significant amount of demand from young professional families. As was noted by planning staff, our project complies with the city's family housing policy with twenty-two bedroom and eight-three-bedroom suites. We expect that the project will contribute approximately twenty-five kids to the neighborhood, as I mentioned previously. In addition to health, education, and other professionals, we think that this location will be attractive to. We have also identified significant demand from downsizers who would like to age-in place in their neighborhood. We've observed this with the very small number of comparable rental buildings that have been built over the past couple decades in similar west-side locations, as well as anecdotally through conversations with neighborhoods, neighbors at our consultations. We would compare our building to, for example, Shannon Muse to the south of us, Laurie House on Arbutus, and the two new buildings on Dunbar, all of whom have been popular with residents who don't need the space of a house anymore, but would like to stay in their traditional neighborhood. Slide, please.
And we've got the, uh, picture of a building?
No, no, should be school capacity.
Yep, school capacity and enrollment. There it is.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna talk really briefly about how our building will complement the schools in the area. Public and private elementary and secondary schools comprising over seventy-five-hundred student spaces and over four-hundred teaching jobs within a ten-block radius of our site. Not only is there plenty of capacity for the children that our project will generate, but we've heard time and time again from teachers and school administrators that the availability of housing is a key challenge in the recruitment of teachers in Vancouver. We expect that our project will offer an attractive and affordable alternative to many of the teachers that work within this ten-block radius. While our modest four-story project can't be expected to solve all the issues that this neighborhood faces, it's a small step in the right direction to help achieve better balance across the city. With that, I'll pass the presentation over to Neil Robertson, who will speak to the details of our proposal. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, your worship. Um, could you please, clerk, move to the, uh, the next slide, which should be the rendering of the building? Unfortunately, I can't see.
It's up now.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, your worship, council. My name is Neil Robertson. I'm the project architect for this project. We've been working on this project with our client, city staff, and in consultation with the neighborhood for approximately two years now. I believe that city staff have done an excellent job introducing the project, as well as the applicable policies and guidelines. And our client likewise has done an outstanding job introducing themselves and describing for you, uh, our engagement process. As such, I'll be focusing on the architecture and, and our design process. For us, this project really is an expression of context and consultation. Virtually every design decision that we've made has been a carefully-measured response to both internal and external forces. Slide, please.
A bunch of yellow, yellow belt bubbles?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, the setting of the project is an example of this. Currently onsite, on neighboring property to the south, as well as in the city boulevard to the north, several mature tree specimens that the, that the design team recognizes important. At a very early stage of schematic design, we met with city staff to discuss tree retention and the sighting of our project. Staff worked with us to identify priority trees, both onsite and offside, that should be worked around to preserve and protect. They're indicated for you here in yellow. I'm happy to report that with a fair amount of effort and flexibility on our client's behalf, we were able to protect and retain all the identified trees by designing the building articulation to coincide with root protection zones of the trees. This has resulted in quite an unorthodox building footprint as the building bends and winds around the various tree root protection zone. Additionally, this was an opportunity to utilize these areas as decompression as outdoor amenity areas and landscaping anchored by mature trees. Slide, please.
And we have a, it's an architectural drawing?
Yes, sir.
The drawing?
Uh, the most dramatic illustration of building articulation can be seen in the below-grade parking, where the lengths to which the building had to be displaced on all four cardinal directions to preserve the trees can be prominently seen. Slide, please. Uh, context and massing was an important aspect of our design response as well. The predominant urban texture of the surrounding neighborhood is large, but family. So it's quite important for us to land upon a massing that was respectful and resonant to the surrounding context. Fortunately, working around the existing trees did some of the work for us by eliminating long, blank facades and by breaking down the mass to a scale commensurate with large, single-family homes on the west, south, and east. We continued this approach on the north side of the building. West Thirty-second is arguably the most prominent exposure of our building, the face of our building, if you will. It was important for us to get, get this right. We identified a module which aligned with the massing of a single, a typical, single-family home, somewhere around thirty-five feet, and utilized modules of basis to step the facade and break the apparent scale of the project. This results in a recognizable scale and rhythm as the building cascades back along Thirty-second Half. Slide, please. The uppermost level, oh, sorry, excuse me, on the uppermost level, we stepped the floor back eight feet on all sides in, in order to decompress the upper portion of the building to allow it to recess away from view and to make the, make it appear more as a three-story building when viewed from the pedestrian perspective. Slide, please. This project is located in Second Shawnee City neighborhood and is currently zoned RS5. Both of these factors weighed heavily on how we approached our facade's material palette. We worked through dozens of iterations and treatments on this aspect of the project. Both the RS5 zone and the nearby First Shawnee City Heritage District, north of King Ed, have very prescriptive design guidelines. These are both primarily single-family homes or zones, and as one might expect, the zoning and guidelines are, guidelines are optimized towards single fam- family typology. Unfortunately, the design and detailing typical in these zones, when applied out of scale, do not work very well. In fact, one of our earliest facade iterations was a literal application of the RS5 design guidelines, and it was agreed by all that saw it that this was the wrong approach. One person that saw it commented that it looked like a bad care facility. So, rather than apply an out-of-scale, turn-of-the-century craftsman tostiche over the facade of our building, we instead utilize, utilize the strong, traditional fundamental design concept of these areas to the application of a modern, high-quality, robust materials. An example of this is our choice of clad, slide please. Um, one quintessential design foundation of First Shawnee City is the tripartite material palette. This is where buildings are clad in three materials, usually with stone or bricket grade to the ground of the building. The remaining two materials typically lighten and applica- application in color as you move up the facade. As you can see, we have used as this design concept with our building through the use of bricket grade and an increasingly lighter palette of linear material as you move up the building. Another example is the inclusion of bays as staccato moments along the facade. We've employed this timeless strategy to denote and emphasize change. On the bays, we've included traditional wood cladding as a method to warm the facade and to reference the project's context. As you heard from our client, we've engaged in an especially robust engagement process between the typical public open houses, but also specifically meeting directly with some of the neighbors who felt especially aggrieved by our proposal. Slide, please. To aid them in quantifying the proposal, we created several analysis drawings and studies, such as the section you see before you here, specifically tailored to examine the impacts of our proposal on their property. The neighbor across the lane to the east expressed concern about the shaking of their rear yard, especially at times when they most utilized it, few impacts, as well as the garage entry congestion adjacent to their lot. Fortunately, our studies revealed that although, visible from some parts of their yard, the majority of the project was obscured by the twenty-foot-high rear cedar hedge in their lot. Slide, please. We performed the shadow studies, study analyses at the times specified for all rezonings when reveal, which revealed no impact on their yards. However, the neighbors explained that they typically enjoy their rear yard in the evenings when the sun is lower. Slide, please. We therefore performed additional shadow studies at times given to us by the neighbors, five PM, six PM, and seven PM. The top row before you represent the shadows present with our lot vacant. The lower row is with our proposed building. Although there was a small impact at six PM, the area shown in red in the center lower, uh, row, we feel that this is a relatively minor impact, which is not present at five PM and disappears by six PM. We also performed several auto-turn analyses to address travel concerns and even started a rendering of our building into an image taken from their backyard, all of which I have at the end of, of this presentation, should council wish to view them. The development team understands that we are not done our work. We and our client are committed to working with the neighbors through the design-development process to continue to respond and to address their concerns. Slide, please. I would like to conclude by providing you with a couple more images of our proposal. The top image is a view of our project on Thirty-second looking southwest, and the lower image is a bird's-eye view from across the street on Thirty-second, looking south. Slide, please. The upper image is, of course, our full rendering with the correct landscaping added in, and the lower image is a view from Granville Street looking east. It ghosted the twenty-foot hedging that we are proposing to retain so that you can see the building beyond, but of course, the hedging is one-hundred percent opaque and you cannot see the lower portion of our building from Granville Street. Finally, since we do not have the advantage of a physical model for you to view, we have prepared for you a short fly-through to demonstrate the experience both ways along Granville Street. In our meetings with stakeholders, many people lauded the green tunnel experience coming along Granville Street. We believe that this is, that this experience is maintained with our proposal. I thank you for your time and attention. The development team is willing and prepared to answer any questions your worship or counselors may have, and clerk, if you would, please now play the video.
Thanks so much. Great, thank you very much. Anything else from the applicant to present?
No, thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much. Okay, council, um, we're now going, now that we've heard from the applicant, uh, this is the time to ask questions of the applicant, if you have any, uh, or to staff, of course. Counselor Fry, did you have, I've got you on the list here, question Q. Do you have questions?
Uh, well, that was a holdover, Mayor, but I do have some questions, uh, and seeing as nobody else is on the list.
Okay.
For, for the applicant, um, this is some pretty significant DCL waivers. I'm just curious, um, appreciate that that's a policy that, that, uh, that you're going after. Um, could this work without that degree of DCL waivers?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Fry. Unfortunately, we're in a, in a market right now where, um, we don't believe that the project would be economically viable without the DCL waiver. We've seen rents probably drop ten to fifteen percent over the past four months. It will affect our financing. We're, we've also, now, we're experiencing lumber costs that have effectively doubled in the last three months. So, no, it, it, it's, um, unfortunately, it's, it's necessary that we apply for the, for the DCL waiver.
Okay. Um, so, but you're saying this is a recent increase in costs? Are, are you suggesting that had this project come to us like last year, it wouldn't have needed the, the DCL waiver, or?
Uh, yeah, when we were looking at the project last year, I think we were evaluating it either way. Um, the DCL waiver, of course, does have significant value to the city in that it, it would force us to adhere to the, to the caps in rents. So, it, it, you know, it becomes a question of math, whether, uh, whether foregoing the waiver will pay for itself, or, or whether we need to, um, you know, accept the waiver and adhere to the cap.
Sure, yeah, no, no, I mean, that, that being the policy, um, sure. I'm just curious really about the math on this particular project. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just on mute there, sorry. Thanks so much. I don't see any other questions. Uh, again, council, this is your only chance to ask questions to the applicant, if you have any. Uh, the next round with questions after we hear from speakers would be for staff only. So just reminding you of that, and I still don't see any counselors on the list, so, um, I'm going to move now to speakers, uh, move to the hearing from the public. If there are any other speakers who wish to speak to this, uh, item, please call toll-free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero-code-six-two-oh-eight-eight hashtag to get on the list. And I know we have a number of speakers on the list. I've got these here. Council, we have, the first speaker that we have calling in by phone is Duncan Wade. Um, moderator, do we have Mr. Wade on the line?
Yes, caller number one, Duncan Wade, your line is open, you can go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hi, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Perfect. Uh, my name is Duncan, and I'm speaking in support of this rental housing proposal. Uh, as a young person living on the west side of Vancouver, uh, and a recent graduate from UBC, I felt it was really important to speak up and advocate for the need for more, uh, excuse me, uh, secured rental housing in our city, in particular in areas that are under, underserved, like Shawnee and the west end of Shawnee. Um, Vancouver housing, maybe can be tough to navigate, uh, when it comes to trying to find a suitable, um, person. Uh, this can be even harder when you're disturbed by the government strategy.
Uh, Mr. Wade, we're, uh, Mr. Wade, we're having quite a hard time hearing you, uh, your phone is, is breaking up. Do you think you can move to a location where, um, we might be able to hear you more clearly?
Um, can you hear me now?
Uh, it seems to be okay now?
All right, um, I, I'm not sure where you, uh, where I lost you guys there, but I'll just, uh, jump back in. Um, I just, I think it's really important, uh, that Vancouver has a, a good strategy to address the housing challenges and low vacancy rates across the city. Um, and I applaud the members of the council and the city staff for continuing to work hard to address the housing climate by taking the public hearing process online in response to social distancing protocols. Approving projects like the one proposed at Granville and 32nd will help to alleviate housing, uh, procedures by delivering 81 new homes for working individuals and families. Generally, I think this proposal will be fantastic addition to the community. Uh, this part of town is primarily single-family homes, so I think the proposal does a good job at respecting the community through thoughtful design, while also bringing, uh, new kind of housing tenure to the area. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time and consideration, and I really appreciate the virtual public hearing platform, it works really well, um, other than that one hiccup. So, thank you guys so much, uh, thank you, bye.
Thanks so much, and I don't see any questions for you from council, I'm just double-checking here. No questions, uh, on to Dustin La Prairie. Uh, via phone.
Can you guys hear me?
We can, uh, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, thanks, uh, good evening, mayor and council, my name is Dustin La Prairie, I would like to offer a few comments in support of the rental housing application before you this evening. This is my first time participating in the public hearing process. Uh, as a renter, I feel compelled to support this application because there are no purpose-built rental housing options in Shawnee, um, at least not that I'm aware of. Um, secured rental housing is hard to come by in Vancouver, especially newer stock, which is what this project is offering in a great location and on a major transit route. As a renter in Vancouver, I often worry about housing security, and as a young person who chooses to live in this great but very expensive city, I expect that I will be renting for this foreseeable future. More projects like this one at Granville and West 32nd are needed to deliver secured rental to the people who rent in this city. Um, that's all I have, thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thanks so much, I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks for participating tonight, I have Andrea Abison.
Hello?
Hi there, thanks for calling in tonight, you have, yes, hi, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you, um, hello, mayor and council, my name is Andrea Abison. I will keep my comments brief, I am a renter in Vancouver and I would like to share my support for the rental building proposed at Granville and 32nd. I lived off Granville Street for a number of years, and I think it would be great to have more rental housing options along this corridor. I hope that this project will receive your support to move forward, thank you for the opportunity, the opportunity to address you tonight.
Thanks so much for calling in, uh, I don't see any speaker or questions for you, so we're going to move on to our next speaker, thanks for calling again. Uh, Mr. David Hutniak, uh, please, uh, go ahead whenever you're ready, up to five minutes.
Yes, so thank you, good evening, your worship and council, uh, my name is David Hutniak, and I am the chief executive officer of Landlord BC. I'm here on behalf of Landlord BC's 3,300 members, uh, all owners and managers of rental housing, to strongly support this rezoning application to build 81 new safe, secure, and sustainable purpose-built rental homes for our community. In our view, with the economic uncertainty facing British Columbians, renting one's home will continue to be the better option for many people. The challenge then becomes ensuring we have adequate supply of safe and healthy rental homes. I've spoken to you as recent as a public hearing held last Thursday about the need for all levels of government to, to create an environment that ensures the continued viability of the rental housing industry. This is even more critical now as our sector continues to navigate the current and future impacts of COVID-19. Please note that the challenges and uncertainties are exponentially greater for anyone contemplating the building of new purpose-built rental housing. As you are already aware, the project before you this evening has been considered under the city's Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy, a policy designed to encourage innovation and enable real examples of ground-oriented and mid-rise affordable housing types that will provide ongoing housing opportunities. More specifically, this policy is intended to demonstrate the transition zone concept between, uh, between higher-density arterial streets and single-family areas. Projects where 100% of the residential floor spaces rental housing would be considered to meet the affordability criteria under this policy. In our view, this project checks all the boxes of this innovative rezoning policy, and on that basis alone is justification for your unanimous approval of this application. Your approval of this application, however, goes well beyond its alignment with a specific city rezoning policy. Building more housing in existing urban areas is critical to address our continuing housing challenges, and that means building denser housing with a vast majority of residential lands available, areas zoned for single-family homes. This project, in our view, addresses the need for missing middle, middle housing in the community, and will enhance the neighborhood while taking serious steps towards more affordable housing and a more sustainable city. What we're talking about with this project is increasing housing diversity, housing choice, and housing attainability. Rather incredibly, as we've seen this city saying that we don't have a housing supply problem, as with the larger housing affordability problem, the scorn heaped on rental developers and on the supply side of rental housing, in my view, ignores basic economics. It's important to remember that rental housing developers are providing a critical service, and that service is a place for individuals and families to call home. If we continue to place barriers for the creation of this housing typology, inevitably, rental developers will take away the service by not building rental housing. This risk is real at the best of times, and especially true today as our sector struggles to navigate through the COVID crisis. The long-term implication of developers ceasing to build purpose-built rental housing would be catastrophic for the city and its residents. Anyone looking for an affordable place to live and anyone in a position to influence urban housing policy, such as yourselves, need to keep that in mind. Denying the need for this supply and then making the suppliers of new rental housing out to be villains, villains, is not going to solve the problem, it's only going to make it worse. In closing, while there's much we do not know about the future for our sector, the one thing we do know is that the future is going to be marked with, one marked with significantly increased risk, uncertainty, and financial challenges. Nevertheless, we have before us this evening a proponent who's prepared to add 81 new safe, secure, sustainable, purpose-built rental homes to our, our community. Secured into perpetuity, I might add. We have a proponent who is prepared to take the considerable financial risks and wants to build housing for local residents. It is important that you unanimously say yes to this project, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks for, uh, calling in this evening, I'm just checking here, and I don't see any questions, uh, for you, Mr. Hutniak, um, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Thank you, uh, we have Shirley, uh, Hebbington, Shirley Hebbington.
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council.
Yes, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you, I guess I'm the first to speak in opposition to this proposal. Seems to me responsible city planning should be striving to achieve housing densification while ensuring neighborliness and compatibility. This current massive proposal is not the neighborly densification solution for this site, there's so many more forms that would fit better. I don't know how council members can possibly have the time to read the long planning reports and all the submissions for and against before you make such important impactful zoning, rezoning decisions. But I'm hoping you have a chance to read many of the passionate and eloquent submissions opposing this proposal. So I'm going to, not going to take your time here with all my objections about parking, traffic, compatibility of the design, and what would happen to Granville Street once this precedent is set. Others, tonight we'll speak to them, they're certainly well-covered in all the written submissions. I just want to tell you on a personal level how we will be highly impacted. We live in 1488 West 32nd Avenue, directly across the lane from the proposed development. Uh, Neil Robertson and Richard Whitstock spoke about us in their presentations. We've lived in this 98-year-old house for 41 years. It was designed and built in 1922 by a well-known Scottish architect, Robert Benzies, for his family home. He called it the shaling, which means crafter's cottage or hut. His granddaughter from England came to visit the house a couple of years ago. It still retains its diamond-leaded windows, stone arches, and rounded doors. Until the 50s, it had a shingle thatch roof. The house stretches across the property, it's long and narrow, not much more than one room wide, and unfortunately, it almost touches the lane. So here's the worst part, this design puts across that 25-foot lane, the entrance to the 71 underground parking spaces and the garbage staging, both immediately under our bedroom windows, across from our kitchen door. Our two-car garage exits right there, too. We face a huge disruption from congestion, noise, traffic, odors, exhaust, and light pollution. Imagine the number of garbage trucks, delivery trucks, moving trucks, dump trucks, never mind the two years of excavation and construction for such a large edifice which just may shake our little house apart. The developer said they can't move the parking entrance, but in the original plan, for a 32-apartment complex, the parking entrance was at the intersection off the back lane. So I will worry about all that and the windows of the 37 apartments that would take away our privacy, and about security that comes with 150 more people living in such close proximity. There will possibly be a large turnover since more than half the apartments are very small, one, well under 600 square feet. So when Richard Whitstock talked about being in our backyard and looking at the shadows and saving us from the noise on Granville Street, I guess you hear what you want to hear because we weren't hearing that noise, and his apartment building isn't going to help us very much. Uh, also, um, I believe that the size and form of this proposal is certainly not compatible, and is not deserving of a change of zoning. And once it's done, it can't be undone, so please send it back to the drawing boards. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your time, and I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to Michael Jacobson, uh, the sixth speaker, Michael Jacobson.
Speaking, can you hear me?
I sure can, up to five minutes whenever you're ready. Hi there, I can hear you, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the opportunity you've given me to oppose this particular proposal. I believe that, I live on Nanton Avenue, which is in the close proximity of 32nd Avenue, and I've lived here since 1980, and I don't live in a $28 million home. I believe that your decision on this proposal will set the guidelines for future Granville Street development from 41st Avenue to 16th Avenue. Council rejected the development proposal for 4575 Granville Street, a very sensitive location, and because of resident pressure, council decided that this project consisting of two blocks of townhouses, four levels in height, would not proceed and would have to be resubmitted. The building which the council is considering tonight is across the road, a four-level building with increased density, and I'm asking you to please consider the views of the neighborhood. The site selected borders on the neighborhood which is very prestigious, and the residents have been active in advising the neighborhood of the importance of this meeting and the consequences in the future. We have now heard from the neighborhood, and we've also heard from our scrutinizer, who advises that of the 102 responses that support the project, only one is from the neighborhood, and 127 who live in the neighborhood oppose the project. So I believe that some of the callers that are calling in this evening are not necessarily from this neighborhood. The applicant is being considered under the Affordable Housing Choices. The word that stands out is affordable. On September the 10th, 2019, the developer, Thomas Holmes, commented to the courier that the rental rates on this building will command above-market rental rates, and would not be affordable to the broad range of the market, and would be exclusive, in my opinion, it does not meet the city Affordable Housing Choices. In addition, I believe the developer, because he's only providing 71 spaces, will be in a position to charge rental for the parking of your cars because the unit is 81 units in total. So only 71 units will get parking, and they'll have to pay an extra parking charge. In addition, I believe that it's possible that the developer could also charge for storage and for bicycle, uh, storage as well. So there are additional charges that I think have to be taken into account, especially in this particular area. I'm against the proposal, I'm proposing that a three-level architecturally-designed townhouse complex be built so as to complement the neighborhood and the Granville Street heritage, which is a gateway to this beautiful city. Also, the recent development on the corner of Laurier and Oak Streets, and I've sent a picture to council, which has, also has borders on an upscale neighborhood, has built an attractive, low-rise building, which has been acclaimed by the local residents as complementing the neighborhood. I think that it would be wise for the, uh, council to consider whether this particular look of this building seems to replicate many of the buildings that are being built around the city. I've seen the same look everywhere. I've seen the same look even on the building that's being proposed on our Beautus Avenue close to King Edward. This is not a unique design, this is a rep, this does not fit in with the local landscaping or the local streetscape, and I think it needs to be rejected. Thank you.
Thanks so much, uh, there are no questions for you, sir, so we're going to move on to our next speaker. Uh, thanks so much, and just, uh, reminder to those who are on, uh, attending council, thank to, just double-check to make sure you're on mute because I can hear people in the background. Uh, next speaker is Ken Rye.
Um, hello there, yep, um, council and mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Um, my name's Ken Rye, as you just mentioned, uh, we reside on, uh, West 32nd Avenue here directly across from this, uh, proposed development, and, uh, we are also opposed to this particular application, and I have a few concerns that, uh, I would like to share. Um, our main concerns include the size and design of the building itself, um, I find the size and design to be overwhelming, um, and that it doesn't suit the surrounding area. Um, this is an RS5-zoned area, and, uh, this application doesn't fit the criteria in terms of the design en masse-ing. Typically, an RS5, any new homes are designed in a way to complement and blend in with the neighboring properties, and, uh, this application overlooks that entirely. Um, most homes in this area are designed with a character or a heritage design, whereas this building has more of a modern or, or contemporary design. Uh, but most importantly, the height of this building is quite overwhelming at four stories, uh, which.
Whoops, uh, I think we've lost, uh, the caller, can I go back to the moderator, do we still have a connection?
Yes, I hope so.
Oh yes, there we go, sorry we lost you there for a minute, uh, please continue. Please continue on.
Okay, yeah, do you know where you lost me, most recently?
Oh, really, just, just a few seconds ago, so I think you can carry on where you were.
Yeah, so I think our biggest concern is the height, at four stories, being taller than what's typically allowed in this zoning. So that being said, we feel a maximum of three and a half stories with the character design is most suitable for this site, which would mean townhouses. For example, the recent developments that we have along Oak and Granville Streets consist of smaller structures, and they fit in nicely with the neighborhood. There's currently no multi-family site along Granville, between Forty-ninth to Sixteenth, so the addition of a large four-story apartment's definitely going to be out of place. My understanding is that the same architect firm is also applying for a townhouse site at Granville and Forty-Nine under the same policy, so just by looking at those renderings, it seems suitable for that neighborhood, and I doubt there would be any opposition to it. Other concerns we have are in regards to the effect on the neighborhood. This site currently consists of two single-family dwellings. The addition of approximately a hundred and fifty or more residents on the same site will for sure have an impact on the neighborhood. West Thirty-Second Avenue is not a wide street by any means, neither is the lane on the east side that Shirley was speaking about. This development's going to definitely lead to increased street parking, street traffic, and a major concern is the traffic issues related to people turning on and off of Granville Street, especially people coming off of high speeds off of Granville onto Thirty-Second. There could be cars lined up here to get on during peak hours, and there'll be nowhere for anyone to go. Another concern I would like to raise is in regards to the policy itself, which the application is made under. It's my understanding this policy is now expired, it's no longer in place. So, so does that mean if this development gets the green light, will it be the only apartment building for a long stretch of Granville Street for years, perhaps even decades to come? That will definitely be an eyesore, it will seem like a mistake, which leads to the issue of spot zoning, meaning is the city ready to compromise a particular site in order to meet certain goals? If that's the case, I urge the city to be very careful with the decision they make in regards to this application. The possibility of seeing a single four-story structure placed in between single-family homes on either side for blocks and blocks in any direction is not a good look for a world-class city such as Vancouver. I'm wondering, why does the city not consider rezoning, redeveloping large sections of the corridor instead, such as a strategy that's used on Camby and Oak Streets? And I'd just like to finish by saying, we do understand the city's desire to add more housing, but this policy shouldn't be a one-size-fits-all solution. Our family has been building in this area for forty years, we understand the developer's intentions, but for this particular site, a smaller development, preferably townhouses, would be most suitable, and I think it would alleviate some of our concerns as neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much, and I don't see any questions for you, sir, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker, Kenneth Friesen.
Yeah, there's no question for me.
On to Kenneth Friesen.
Oh, yeah, sorry, we got the line mixed up. There it is.
That's okay. Thanks very much.
Kenneth, you can go ahead, your line is open.
Hi.
Hello, please go ahead, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
All right. Thank you very much. You're the mayor and council, my name is Ken Friesen. I'm a Western resident from Carersdale for some fifty years, and I'm calling in support of this project. The basis of my call is really the fact that I have four children, and their teenage years, we're aging from fourteen actually up to twenty-two, and thinking about the affordability question for them, and, which is really a question for all of us, really. And looking at this issue about affordability and how we're going to get to a position that our kids and our, our neighbors can afford to have their children and other people who live in this area, the only way we're going to get there is with more affordable kind of uses of houses. And I've, I've heard others comment on the idea that, in fact, that these properties aren't necessarily going to be affordable, and the fact, matter is, that we have eighty new homes coming into the neighborhood and that, with other developments of a similar ilk will lead to greater numbers of houses, which is the only reason, only way that you're going to have a lowering of housing prices. And if you replace these sort of homes with townhomes with the, the base costs of the land will be that much higher, and that'll lead to issues about affordability for them as well, because you can't just create affordability of townhomes. So it's, it's the number of units that come off the market that make the difference. You know, most of us have come out of a background of growing up in Carersdale where we think that the, that density is just not going to work for us, and I understand that, that most of us have a view that, you know, that drug issues can be solved by policing, and that's not working either. And so we have to find new solutions to, to deal with these issues, and this issue of affordability's not going to go away. So while I'm talking that in their neighborhood, this is going to have some impact at four stories, will have some impact when people are used to two and a half or three, but four stories long in arterial like Granville is not going to be overwhelming, if one looks at it in the context of Camby or other arterials. And so where you have a vacancy rate, and I understand from the city planning, it's around point five percent, and the average is three percent, that three percent you can't even say is a well-balanced rental market, that a rental or more units on the market is necessary. So I think the developer's done what they can in terms of the community aesthetic, they have a hedge that they're carrying along. It's not what everybody wants, is density, that's a realization, but everybody wants the housing crisis to be solved, and we have to do this house by house and region by region and do our part. And so that's, that's my presentation, and thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. I don't see any questions for you, sir, so we'll move on to the next speaker, but I appreciate you calling in tonight. We have Joel Kaloff next.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and councillors, my name is Joel Kaloff, and I'm calling in to offer my support for purpose-built rental housing proposed at forty-seven fifty Granville Street. This project, and the previous application for the townhome development next to the hospice across the street, have generated a lot of debate on both sides of the spectrum, and I'd like to provide my input, because more often than not, people comment at these hearings when they are opposed, while the supporters may believe it's a good idea and simply carry on with their day. Additionally, to one of the other speakers' points, a couple of speakers back, it's likely that no one from your neighborhood speaks approvingly of these developments because nobody from outside the neighborhood can afford to get in, or city council will not approve anything to let those people get into the neighborhood. So this becomes a very circular argument. As you're aware, and everyone has said, we're experiencing a crisis of escalating house costs and limited supply, driving people out of Vancouver, particularly true for young families, like everybody has said before. These homes will provide a great option for neighbors looking to sell and also downsize within their community. And on the topic of affordability, not every house and every lot in every city is designated to be affordable for every person along the affordability spectrum. However, when you take two single-family homes off the market and you add eighty-one multi-family residences, you are contributing to decreasing the affordability crisis, because you are bringing more people into the community who can manage those mortgage payments. Council, I hope you will allow the development to proceed, because this is the kind of development that will house my parents, healthcare workers, UBC educators, and the last thing that this site needs and this city needs is for the developer to build two new large single-family homes, which the existing zoning allows. I also want to add a note about council's responsibility. It seems to me that council's responsibility and mandate is about moving the city forward and moving population growth forward. And a lot of the residents who are expressing reservations and criticisms about this seems to be suggesting that life should stay as it is, we shouldn't be moving forward, we're not welcomed, we're not, we're not going to be welcome to new families, and we want everything to stay like the village that it's been for fifty-something years. That's not how big cities function, and it's not how you were able fifty, sixty, seventy years ago to purchase your house. Somebody paved the way for those houses in Shaughnessy and Carersdale so that you could purchase one, and now it's your turn to open your arms and welcome the next generation of people. Thank you.
Thank you for participating tonight. I don't see questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker on the list, who I have as number ten, Devon Hessek.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. My name is Devon Hessek, and given the number of anti-vacancy tax lines along Granville Street, as a resident of Vancouver, I can't help but wonder if I have more of a connection to this site than some of those who own property in the blocks around it. To be clear, I don't mean to disparage these extremely affluent members of our community, nor would I ever suggest they should be careful what license plates are on their car before they leave home. After all, I understand what it's like to be bullied, that's not just because of the very ugly mustache I had when I was a teenager. Rather, it's because of the experience I had on the step to City Hall after speaking to you about another rental application almost across the street from this one. I cannot tell you how much it hurt to be accused of being a heartless paid shill simply because I expressed that my mother would have appreciated the laughter of children as she lay dying from counter. I love my community, and I love my mother, and there's nothing that would ever make me sell either of them out. Of course, I know some people are prone to bad behavior when there's a chance they might not get their way. Surely, the flyers circulating in this neighborhood, as well as the letters who claim these homes to bring prostitution, drug use, and worse, prove that. It is not elected officials, it's up to you to set an example, and I worry your actions have done just that. I know that some of you expressed regret for that vote in light of the aforementioned property owners' plans to abandon their rental dream. However, a look at how these blocks have been carved out of the new secure rental policy proves your staff took it as a decree to follow, which is distressing, because there's no denying that Shaughnessy is in dire straits. A look at the declining census figures and the Vancouver School Board's projected student enrollment numbers prove that. There are some who blame this solely on those who can afford a thirty-million-dollar home, like the one listed two properties to the east of this one, but even extremely affluent people have families. Conversely, some of these massive structures do sit empty, as they undergo so-called heritage restoration, where they are raised on stilts and stripped to their bare frame. That may explain the temporary drop in population, but I'm sure that many of you realize the real problem is far more systemic. I know councillor Swanson has recently described Camby in Oak Ridge as a rich person's ghetto, but I ask you, what does that make Shaughnessy? After all, is there a worse example of gentrification than the development applications at fourteen-twenty-seven West King Edward, where eight renters were kicked out of a large homely occupied in favor of a multimillion-dollar conversion to one massive single-family home? This project is born out of a policy to ensure we don't keep repeating, repeating these recent and historic mistakes. After all, without it, the applicant could simply build two homes here that would resemble something from a farm in Richmond. Fortunately, thanks to this, our government's intervention, this proposal can make one small step in truly restoring the spirit of this community. That said, this hasn't been done by mocking the neighborhood's story character with a cheap imitation, but rather by establishing a modern quality design. Unfortunately, most of that luck will be hidden behind the, hidden behind the large hedge wall, which I understand lays within the city mandated right of way. I would have preferred to see these, I would have preferred to see new stores and businesses here instead, but I hope a widening, frankly, I hope a widening of Granville Street never happens. After all, that would be a sign we're forcing even more of our friends, colleagues, and loved ones to commute for hours down this highway. I cannot imagine their thoughts if we spend these hours with this evergreen wall that mocks them in our city's sustainability goals. Obviously, this one building cannot solve all these problems, nor can it house everyone in need, but it is a sign that it is time to reverse Shaughnessy's decades-long decline. These homes might be one day described as a hidden jewel, or you may craft a new policy to ensure they're the last of their kind, or not, but I believe this application has earned the right to become part of this community's long tapestry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in, we appreciate it, and sharing your views. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to speaker number eleven, Terry Clark.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hello?
Please go ahead.
Oh, hi.
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, good.
Up to ten minutes, or five minutes, sorry, five minutes.
Oh, oh, I don't have ten minutes, okay. Thank you for taking the time to listen, and, and just in response to something somebody else said about, you know, big cities have to move forward, I, I think, you know, big cities do have to move forward, but maybe slow growth, you know, rather than unchecked growth, I think that that's important to understand in this day of maybe overpopulation in the earth, but that's another story altogether, but thank you for the time and to listen to me. Yeah, I have friends who live in the area, and what really offended me this morning was reading a paper where the, the writer said that people in this area, you know, lower Shaughnessy, upper Shaughnessy, are pejoratively referred to as the creme de la creme and never want densification. I found that so offensive, because these particular friends that I know who've lived there for over forty years have done so much for the city, and at, and at that time, you know, when they bought their house, forty-five percent increase has now happened in the city, but during their time there, I happen to know that one of the people that lives in the property that's most impacted was one of the people who helped save the fifty-five acres that is now the Botanical Garden, also served as the president of the Van Dusen Botanical Garden Association, and along with other presidents of the Vancouver Garden Club, were able to raise thousands of dollars for the hospice across the street on Granville, for Powell Place Women's Shelter, the Covenant House Roof Garden, and Knuck Place and Honor House. So I think the initial scale of this development was more palatable when it was a little smaller or half the size. I, I don't dislike it, I, I looked at it and I thought, this is very, you know, very interesting, trying to fit in with a four, four-story, I think that's way better than six. But it's my view, after hearing so much lately, that the citizens of Vancouver have little or no idea how the city they love is zoned. I think that it's always a big surprise when it comes up, and it seems to be happening, crops up with every new development. Maybe it's time, and maybe you're already working on a bold new plan, like a big plan, that we can all sit down and, and decide that this is what we want for the city over the next fifty years, something like the nineteen twenty-eight Harlan Bartholomew Plan, perhaps. I think we need to create a half-century development, starting now, based on sustainability and livability for all of Vancouver, of course with input, but one where we are all singing from the same song sheet, so when a new generation spends hard-earned savings on an apartment, condo, townhouse, or a single-family home, they can rest assured that the new Vancouver Plan is good for X, Y, Z years with wiggle room for tweaking. The hospice across the street development, or the hospice itself, deserve to know there might be a spot zoning in the near future when they build their facility and garden, just like the residents who you, you heard from tonight. I've looked at the plans, and all in all, except for the doubling of the original density, it looks sensitive and attractive. It's more the numbers. In closing, I'd just say the metropolis of Vancouver, beautiful by nature first and foremost, cannot be all things to all people, but we can try and plan a better future in void evenings like this. Through cooperative planning and a new, more sustainable vision, perhaps with a population cap, we can sober up from being drunk on development and take the time to not only build affordable dwellings, but livable ones, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in, appreciate it. You don't have any questions, council, before I move on to the next caller? We are at nine-thirty, this meeting is scheduled to go to ten. We really have two options, we could just stop at ten and we would reconvene to hear the rest of the speakers and debate and decision for tomorrow at six PM, or we could extend this evening to hear from the remainder of the speakers. There are council forty-one speakers on the list, we are through, we're at number twelve now, so that gives you a sense of where we are. And it has been, every single speaker has, that signed up has, has attended tonight. So I'm going to leave that with you, just to think about, it is nine-twenty-nine, and I'm going to move on to the next speaker, Lynnall Amaro.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me all right? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thanks, yes, I can, thank you. Go up to five minutes, go ahead.
I submitted some slides, if those are available to be shown.
I will check with the clerks, clerks, just checking here, oh, here they come. Okay, great, and they are up, so I am going to start your clock, and I will let you know as your slides are, are turning. know as your slides are, are turning. So go ahead, sir.
Uh, good evening Mayor Stewart, council members and neighbors. Um, my name is Lynall Amaro and my family and I oppose the rezoning of seventy-five fifty Granville Street. I live within two box, two blocks of the proposed, proposed rezone. Uh, next slide. We bought our home in two thousand and one because of the style of the homes, the low density and quiet, safe neighborhood setting. We were very attracted to the Shaughnessy area and we sacrificed a lot of things in our life to prioritize our investment in this neighborhood. We are willing to pay high property tax rates for this lifestyle and we kept our home well-maintained to the high standard because we appreciate the beauty and historic nature of the area. In two thousand and nineteen, Vancouver was ranked third in the world for equality of living. Shaughnessy is the crown jewel of Vancouver. In November two thousand and five, the City Council solidified a plan to preserve the historic neighborhoods for future generations, yet still allow growth. This plan was called the Arbutus Ridge Curstale Shaughnessy Vision, Community Vision, or Arcs Vision. This plan realized the value in retaining the area's historic and mature, single-family neighborhoods. It provided guidance on how to maintain and enhance them and how to make them safer and included the importance of community involvement in future decisions. Next slide. However contrary to the Arcs Vision, the proposed, the proposal that you have before you tonight does not value the single-family neighborhood of the historic and mature nature of the Shaughnessy area. This proposal does not improve the community's safety. If approved, this rezone would not respect the input of the community that lives here. Instead, it puts more value on the input from those who don't live in this neighborhood. More than eighty percent of the respondents who oppose this rezone live in the Shaughnessy area. Next slide. The Arcs Vision provided guidance to where growth is appropriate, stating that new housing types on large lots should be near arterial roads and around shopping areas. When confronted with this well-thought-out plan, the referral report before you from the City Planning Department simply dismisses this by saying regular bus service allows access to shopping areas and other amenities. The vision is walking service, walking distance, not bus service. This rezone violates the city's Arcs Vision. This area isn't like Yelltown or Olympic Village, it doesn't have the amenities they have. This rezoned area is not near any shopping areas. Next slide. The current R five zoning schedule is to maintain the existing residential character of the district in the form of one-family dwellings, secondary suites and laneway houses. New development should be compatible with the form and design of the existing development. Two-family dwellings on largest lots are allowed in conjunction with retention of the character houses. This proposal just doesn't fit. Next slide. This proposal doesn't harmonize with the character of the Shaughnessy neighborhood. It ignores the impact of Granville Street, it ignores the increase in traffic and parking on the narrow side streets. This proposal just doesn't fit. Next slide. The proposed use of the rezone property is too high of a density. This proposal relies hea, too heavily on bicycle use, when even an optimistic model splits has only five to seven percent of trips being taken by bicycle. The city planners must show that the development will not impose parking chaos on the neighborhood, as with similar developments in Surrey and Langley. It is much more convenient to park on a road than maze through an underground parking lot. We already have impacts from commuters parking free on the narrow streets and taking a bus into town. In addition, special events like the Van Dusen Gardens Festival of Lights and other events clog up the streets. Some of the streets are already breaking up from heavy use and are in disrepair. Next slide. In the interim rezoning policy for affordable housing criteria, the city requires approval be subject not only to affordability and design consid, design considerations, but must also demonstrate a degree of community support.
It just ten seconds left.
This application is not supported by the community that is most impacted by it, by its residents and is not in harmony with the neigh, neighborhood, the R S five permitted use or the Arcs Vision Plan. Next slide, I've seen developers come and grow.
No, sorry, sir, you're, you're at your five, you're at your five minutes, but you do have questions from councillor Hardwick. Councillor Hardwick, please go ahead, up to five minutes for questions, thank you.
Yes, and thank you very much for the presentation. Will you be making this presentation available to council?
I, I provided the city clerk with a PDF of this presentation, ma'am.
Well, great, then request to the city clerk that it be circulated among council. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, that's it for questions for you, sir. Appreciate you coming in this evening and presenting. The next speaker is Chantelle Darvell, speaker number thirteen, Chantelle Darvell.
Good evening, hi, this is Chantelle Darvell. I'm a Vancouver resident and I'm in support of the application. And can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, please go ahead.
Okay, okay, great. I'm supporting this application based on the fact that it offers family-sized homes in a highly desirable location within walking distance to multiple schools and parks and is extremely well-served by transit along the frequent transit network. This touches me personally as I have my family with two kids that go to the local school. We have friends that have been displaced due to houses that they've been renting, they've been sold and they've had to move out of the community as there's just been no options for them. So for me, I really do feel the need for this type of development. I think that the developers have done an extremely good job, just from everything that I've seen and from the design and to just, just the entire proposal. So, yeah, just for the record, I am in support and thank you for listening to me this evening.
Great, thanks so much for calling in, I don't see a question for you. Next speaker is Dave Downey, number fourteen.
Hello Mayor Stewart and council members, can you hear me okay?
I can, please go ahead.
Thank you, my name is Dave Downey and I grew up in Shaughnessy, not far from the rental housing project that's being proposed for Granville and West Thirty Second. I've lived in the city my whole life, but unlike many opposed to this development, although I grew up in this neighborhood, when I came of age to raise a family, I could not afford to live anywhere close to where I grew up. I'd like to offer my support for this application, which I believe will bring new life to the community and create options for both seniors who are looking to downsize but have lived in the area for decades, as well as young urban families and couples who are unable to afford a full-size, single-family home in the area. When my parents were looking to downsize from their single-family home, we searched extensively to find suitable housing for them in this neighborhood and we found nothing, which is why my parents were compelled to live in our suite in East Vancouver, very far from the community and friends that they've lived with for decades. At present, although the area that Shaughnessy encompasses is vast, there are few opportunities for affordable housing, rental or otherwise, in this neighborhood, which therefore reduces housing opportunities for empty nesters and retired seniors, seniors like my parents, who are looking to stay in the community, or those who work in the area but are unable to afford a typical house in Shaughnessy. With this extreme rise in real estate prices in our city, the average Vancouverite has few choices for homes in which to live in, and I think that this development, especially situated near well-sustainable transportation services, will contribute to increasing density in an area that has lots of room for improvement in this area. In the east side of Vancouver, we have had similar developments of this nature and they have been absorbed into the community effectively. Shaughnessy is one of the most beautiful neighborhoods in our city, it is well-served by community amenities. I don't think it should be a ghost town and I see this project as a catalyst to help bring young families back to the area and to revitalize this one thriving community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, there's no questions for you, but thank you very much for calling in today. And speaker number fifteen is Fred Cozier.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
I sure can, and you have up to five minutes, whenever you-
Okay, thank you, thank you Mayor Stewart and City Council for taking this opportunity to speak. I've never spoke before, so excuse me if I stutter. I, yeah, I live just a half a block north of these two properties and I must say I am strongly opposed to, to this application. The developer went to great lengths to show slides, videos, to, 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 to demonstrate that he reached out to the local residents. I've never been contacted once, in fact, even on his little video, I'm just a little green splotch just down the street from his project, he's never contacted me once. You know, we talk about this project and it's on your books for a couple of years and, and then the residents that live in the area, I live half a block and I have lived there since nineteen eighty-one, and so I, I, I know what's going on in, in the neighborhood. I've never been contacted to, once. You know, to, to increase density from point seven to one point six, which is more than double, is a recipe for disaster. Five, four-story residential buildings, you might, you'll find that along Oak Street or Canby Street, which is where Canada Line is, so this development doesn't fit in with the character of Granville Street neighborhood at all. To replace two residential buildings with eighty-one units would create a massive increase in the number of people living on the site, increase in cars, demand on schools, daycares, one level of underground parking, with households, eighty-one different households, they generally have one or two cars, so you know right away parking would be an issue. Hundred and fifty-four bike stalls, I live in that area and not many people bike to work, so maybe the hundred and fifty-four bike stalls should be a hundred and fifty-four parking stalls, because it's, it simply doesn't work. There are four or five different houses, developments on, on the go right now in the neighborhood. We can hardly get through now with the cars, with the trucks that are parking there, we can hardly get through now. Garbage service, the City of Vancouver has a hard time navigating our lanes right now. Just last week, and the City of Vancouver staff was there, they, the garbage truck regularly smashes into the garage located at four, five, eight, eight Granville Street and there's a, there, there's an insurance claim right now where, where the poor homeowner has to deal with the City of Vancouver to get her gutters replaced because the garbage truck can't even go through up and down there. So, if you put in an eighty-one unit building, that would be a recipe for disaster because we can't even get through now with parking and garbage. It's already a, a disaster and it's already a challenge. You know, I, I reviewed the, the rental chart, people with two to three thousand dollars per month for rent would probably just buy their own place and not bother to, to rent a place. You know, it, it, I, I looked at the pro forma, actually, I did a pro forma for the one, for the fifty-two one units, nineteen one, two-bedroom units and ten three-bedroom units, and, and the revenue to be generated from that is two-point-four to two-point-five million dollars in, in rent per year, depending, you know, assuming that there was full occupancy. Based on a four percent cap rate, that's sixty million, seventy million dollars in, in property value. So, I mean, from the city's standpoint, that's great, but for the local residents, this is a recipe for disaster and, and should not be supported in, in any way, shape or form. You know, like, we live in the area, we, we grew up in the area and we continue to, you know, to contribute to, to the, to, to the culture of the Granville Street neighborhood and we're just getting walked over as if we don't even exist. Like, like I said, you know, this project is on your books for, you know, a couple of years and then you close it, but we're the ones that live with this thing and, you know, if we can't get through for parking, garbage is already a problem, parking is a problem, how is it possible that you can increase density from two, single-family residences to eighty-one units and, 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 and not be a recipe for disaster? It, it is and, and it just simply should not be approved at all. It should be, go back to the drawing board and should be cut in half. It's only because it can go up to four stories that this thing makes financial sense if it was-
Thanks so much.
-two stories, the developer wouldn't go for it. But thank you, I, I-
Thanks so much, you're right, you're-
-for your time.
Thank you, I don't see any questions for you, sir, so-
Question for Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councillor De Genova?
I do have some questions, if possible.
Okay, uh, yes, councillor De Genova has questions for your caller, if you're still there, please go ahead.
I'm still here, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead councillor De Genova.
Thanks very much and thanks for making the time to come and speak with us. I do wonder if you might be-
Absolutely.
You, you don't have to answer any of my questions if you choose not to, but you had mentioned that you didn't think that people would be willing to pay those type of rents, that they'd just go and buy, but we see that people in our city right now are paying those type of rents, so I'm just wondering, I mean, did you feel that these units would sit empty?
Well, I think they would just have a hard time being rented and if they were rented, maybe instead of a family, two or three students that come together and, and all pull, pull their money together, because, you know, I, I'm a, I'm a bachelor of commerce degree with a major in urban line economics, I've been a member of the Real Estate Institute of British Columbia for over thirty years and if I was to have two to three hundred, two to three thousand dollars per month, I wouldn't put it into rental, I simply wouldn't from a financial standpoint, it makes absolutely no sense. If you're a temporary renter, maybe a, you know, a student at U B C, you want to have a place to crash for two, three years, two, three students get together, away you go, everybody put in a thousand dollars, after you get your degree, you're gone. A family would not do that.
Okay, I will follow up with our staff, which I can do afterwards, on sort of-
And you can send me an email if you'd like.
-on that information. So thank you for answering the question. The next question I had is, and I really appreciate your, your very passionate, you know, presentation about living in the neighborhood and growing up in the neighborhood and wanting to continue to live in the neighborhood. What, where do you think that the next generation, the people who, you know, maybe like, for instance, when I was first elected last term, I was the first millennial elected to City Council, but where do you think that, you know, people of my generation or future generations, do you think they'll be able to afford to live in the neighborhood right now, the way that it stands if it continues to be a single-family residential detached neighborhood?
Well, it, I, I don't think it, you, you may not be able to afford a home and, and my home is no six million dollars, it's, it's just a two-bedroom or a two-level rancher that we just keep paying and paying and maintaining, so it's nothing fancy by any stretch of the imagination. On King Ed, right now, there is one larger home, I can't remember the cross, Cartier, I think it is, and there's a, there's a proposal in front of his place and it's a one-house and they're going to stratify it into six units. So the character stays the same, but he's gone from one, single-family dwelling to six stratified units. I don't know if they're going to be, it said one home sold, five remaining, that's right on King Ed and so something like that, where the home is, is redesigned and, and lifted, stratified, your density is a lot lower, you know, and, and that works, that stays within the character.
Just, just to follow a question to that though, like about the affordability, obviously, the affordability for taking a lot size like that, and I mean, I have a, a background in land economics and real estate, the nonprofit and private sector too, so, I mean, looking at six units versus rental for, for multi, multifamily residential rental is going to be much more affordable, do you think that this allows more of those people to be able to stay in the neighborhood who grew up there?
I guess it would, I guess it would, but when you're an owner, you have a far greater impact and, and, and care more for the neighborhood than you would if you're a renter. If you're a renter, you rent on a month-to-month basis, your, your tenancy is based on the Residential Tenancy Act and thirty days later you can go. And there's no desire, there's no need, there's no, nothing to hold you into that neighborhood, you've got a new job, you've got your degree, you've, you've got a job, you're moving to Toronto or whatever, and bye, see you later, and yet we're one that continue to live here.
And is there anything that says other than capital gains? Sorry, I only have a, a little bit of time-
Thirty seconds.
Is there any, is there anything that says other than capital gains that if you were to purchase a home, that you couldn't sell it in the same amount of time and leave?
Well, of course you could do that, it's just that the, the rental, the way, the rental is set up, they don't have the, the ties to the neighborhood as we have. I've lived there for thirty-eight years, I, I kind of know what's going on in the neighborhood.
And we're just at the five minutes.
Well, unfortunately, that is my time, my apologies, thank you for answering my question.
You can, I, I thank you for your time councillor De Genova, I knew your dad as well when he was on Parksport, and, and if you want to email me or continue this conversation, certainly reach out. Um, and- and if you wanna email me or continue this conversation, uh, certainly reach out.
Thank you very much.
I'm not too bad with the public hearing, but thank you.
Thanks, and that's it for questions for you, sir. Uh, council, we are at ten to ten, uh, and, uh, we have, um, I did see on the list that we had one pers- uh, a speaker in person in chambers, but I've been informed by the clerk that they, I believe, have, uh, are not there. Uh, so, um, we have a choice to make. Uh, we can either, um, extend to try to make it through the remainder of the speakers, and we're quite halfway through, uh, the list, or we could, um, reconvene tomorrow at six P.M.
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, Counselor DeGenova?
Counselor DeGenova?
I- 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 for- I'm not sure of the speaker's situation, but we have this meeting scheduled until a certain time. We don't just have a few more speakers on the list, and I know even if we did, uh, people can call in after that. So, um, I won't be able to stay very much longer after ten P.M., and I understand council has meetings tomorrow. So, um, I- I would- I won't be able to stay past ten P.M., and I'd like to move that we- we end at ten P.M.
Okay, we don't- sure, thanks. I- we don't really have to move anything. I'm just gonna let council know that, uh, we'll hear from- well, I'm gonna call for one more speaker, and, uh, and then we'll just- we'll let- end it there at- at ten o'clock, so-
Oh, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, so, uh, speaker sixteen is Becky Kerfoot. We have Becky Kerfoot on the line.
Hello.
Hi there. Uh, you're the last speaker of the evening. Up to five minutes, please.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stewart, councilors, and planning staff. As a former resident of the west side of Vancouver, with aging parents who continue to live in the neighborhood, I'd like to offer my support to the proposal to build new market rental housing at four-seven-five-zero Granville Street. My husband and I both grew up on the west side, and now reside in East Van. Our parents still live on the west side, and I do worry that there are virtually no options for them to downsize in the area. It's becoming increasingly more difficult for longtime residents like my parents, who've contributed to this community, to downsize within their community. Not everyone wants to own late in life. Additionally, many seniors also appreciate living close to healthcare and/or critical care providers. Furthermore, this type of housing could also allow caregivers to this local aging demographic to live close to where they work. I work as a physiotherapist at Women and Children's Hospital, which employs more than one thousand full-time and part-time staff, with employees commuting from across the Lower Mainland. Purpose-built rental housing at this location will help critical community service providers, nurses, hospital staff, and in-home care providers to find housing close to work. The unfortunate reality is that the critical care providers that we depend on have to commute from elsewhere because we lack affordable rental housing options in the neighborhood. I truly hope this development will proceed. We need more housing options. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for calling in, and I do not see any questions, uh, for you this evening, so, uh, thanks again for participating. Um, that- that takes us to, uh, through sixteen speakers, council, and the next speaker on the list is Matthew Fahy, uh, who, uh, may come in person. So, uh, council, I think we can, uh, break eat early, so if we could just have a, uh, seven minutes early, a- and so if you have a motion to recess, we'll come back, uh, at six.
Motion to recess.
Thank you very much. In a second. Thanks, and we'll be recessing, uh, tomorrow night at- at six P.M. to finish the speakers and debate and decision. Anything else I'm forgetting there, clerks?
No, that- that is correct. Um, Mayor Stewart, tomorrow evening, six P.M.
Great, thanks very much. Uh, all in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Opposed, say nay. Great, okay, thanks very much, council. We're, uh, recessed until tomorrow. Thanks again. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, clerks.
Everyone, thank you, clerks office. Thank you so much.
Bye.